Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming today. It's Tuesday, June 18th. It's 6:45 and this is our regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Okay. Let's do the pleasure allegiance. Please rise.
My pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, roll call please.
I see Councilmember Chow just arriving at the dais. And Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fruin?
Here.
Mayor Mohan?
Here.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report? Yes, there is.
There is. There are two matters to report, Mayor. The first matter is Pacific Center for Autism Education versus City of Cupertino. The city executed a settlement agreement in which the city will receive a payment of $50,000 in exchange for the reconvenance of a deed of trust. That item is on today's agenda as item number 10 for council's consideration. And that settlement was authorized by a 5-0 vote of council. The second matter is Harshid Sharma and Poonam Salakhar v. City of Cupertino. The city entered into a settlement agreement with both plaintiffs for a total amount of $375,000, $325,000 of which will be paid by the city. The settlement was authorized by a 4-0 vote of council with Councilmember Way absent.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Okay. We'll go to the ceremonial items. I'd like to announce that tomorrow we will officially recognize Juneteenth as a city holiday. On June 19th, our city offices will be closed in observance of this important day. By observing Juneteenth, we are acknowledging a crucial part of our nation's history and honoring the long journey towards freedom and equality. This holiday is a time for reflection, education, and community, offering us all an opportunity to learn from the past and commit ourselves to building a more just and equitable future. To observe Juneteenth is a small, yet significant gesture to show our commitment to these values. We recognize the importance of taking time to honor the struggles and triumphs that have shaped our community and our nation. So as we reflect on the significance of this day, we also take a moment to remember and honor the legacy of a true American icon, Willie Mays, who passed away today at the age of 93. Willie Mays was not only one of the greatest baseball players of all time, but also a trailblazer and a symbol of excellence and perseverance. His contributions to sports and society have left an indelible mark on our hearts and our history. Thank you. Moving on, are there any postponements of Madam City Manager? I... What I would like to do is take item number 14, which is the future agenda items requested by city council members, the TBD list. I was hoping we could put it on the consent calendar, since these are items that we have discussed before and there should be no surprises. That is a motion and I need a second.
Hold on for a second.
Okay. Did you have a comment?
If this were put on consent, I would have pulled the item and then I could pull the item. And now you are making this very late request to put out it on consent. I know there are public members who would like to speak, who are raising their hands, who have sent in... I think this is very unusual to put an agenda item on consent on the dais, because that does not give me any chance or public a chance to pull it off consent. If they were on consent, I could have pulled it by sending a request by noon today.
As far as I know, we've done this before, Councilmember Chow.
No, but then you...
And it's...
If it were on the consent, I would have been able to pull the request of one council member. And now you are making it so that I cannot pull it as one council member. And you are making it so that it would require a majority to not to pull it. I mean, to not pull it.
Mr. City Attorney, is there anything irregular in this?
No, this is... I mean, this is procedurally proper. I think it's up to council to decide whether it stays on consent... Or, excuse me, stays on the action calendar or moves to consent.
Okay. So we have to vote on it?
It requires a majority vote of council.
Okay. So we... Councilmember Way, you wanted to say something?
Yes. Can I ask a question? So is there any specific items you'd like to discuss or the whole thing?
There are specific items people have requested want to speak. For example, some of the items the staff recommended to not do anything, especially those items that we have requested agenda item, the staff has said that they wouldn't recommend not do anything. So we are basically rejecting those agenda requests. This shouldn't be done on consent.
Okay. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. I concur with Councilmember Chow and I don't agree with a number of the recommendations for this agenda item as well. So I'm... I would not move this on to consent and it's a way of dismissing our requests and it's... I find it unacceptable.
So I didn't know this wouldn't be on consent, so some of my questions, I didn't send them beforehand, because I thought we'll have a chance to talk about it. I have questions for staff on why they are making the recommendation this way or that way. And now the last minute putting it on consent bribed me of... They bribed me of any opportunity for questions and the public any opportunity for questions and see our deliberation on whether to consider an item or not.
Mr. City Attorney, if we do put it on consent, does this prevent us from discussion?
So, yeah, the purpose of the consent calendar would be if there would be no need for council discussion. It does not prevent members of the public from commenting, but if there's... There is a desire for council discussion, I would not recommend putting it on the consent calendar.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Way?
So I just want to say, I'm okay with things... Councilmember Chow seems to be strong about it, but I do recommend, even if it's on the action item, if we have questions, we should ask the staff ahead of time.
I will withdraw my motion then. Let's move on. It's oral communications and this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion, including informational items. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule according to my discretion. So we... How many cards do you have, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I have seven requests to speak in Community Hall. I think that takes 21 minutes. And I see... I see three hands requesting to speak virtually. So that's up. Now it's 5:15, so we're about 36 minutes.
We may get more cards.
And they have...
What's that?
People have nine minutes to request to speak.
Okay. All right. Let's go with three minutes per speaker.
Okay. Okay. So we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jerry Lammy, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I am very, very glad that we have democracy here in Cupertino and that we can meet tonight. I'm also... I spent the last week or two in various parts of Virginia. And I was dragged around by my mother's cousins to graveyards and old homes, farmsteads, and the John Goodenough House, which is from 1708 in Virginia Beach. And I will tell you, I made a vow then, when I was in Virginia, that my ancestors made the right decision. They fought for their independence from England. Now I do like England, et cetera, et cetera, but my ancestors had a choice in 1760, when the first group were killed in North Carolina by British troops. We're talking about bayonets. This is not fun stuff. But my ancestors were forced in the 1750s, 1760s, 1770s to go to war. And there were seven of them, seven brothers, and they all fought. They fought at the age of 30, down to the 18-year-old who enlisted in the last year, 1781. They made the right decision. 17... I'm sorry. 1781. They made the right decision. What YIMBY is doing to our country is the same thing. YIMBY action and Up for Growth action are establishing other chapters across the United States. This country is going into another battle. I cannot imagine what Scott Wiener and those housing laws would have done to Virginia, what they will be. There is a YIMBY group in Charlottesville and Arlington and other areas. The YIMBY group in Charlottesville is being directly fed by California YIMBY. This is what's happening. I can tell you right now that there would be no battlefields left. Monticello would go down, Mount Vernon, the White House. These people do not care anything about the history of our country. Yes, some people may think that they're great, that's fine, but they don't know the full history. They are... I believe they're a vanguard group such as the SLA were. We are pushing things that are on beyond Bolshevik. This is the danger that we are sitting at. It's... And so we had people using the HCD numbers. They knew they were wrong. They should be prosecuted. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next we have Jerry Lammy, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Jerry.
Jerry Lammy?
Yes.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor, City Council. I'm Jerry Lammy. I'm the Executive Director of West Coast Farmers Markets. And Cupertino has been fantastic to me and this has been my home and the home of the farmers market since October 2nd, 2011, when we founded it at the Cupertino Oaks. With the city's help, we've moved back and forth from the Oaks Memorial Park a couple of times, and then the city helped me move to Deansay College. My year and a half contract is up and they're putting it up for an RFP, which means that if we lose the market, we don't get the RFP, the vendors that are part of my association will no longer be working here in Cupertino. I'm coming back to the city to see if we can find a location to save the market. We've currently... We've grown quite a bit. I would say that we've got 27 farmers, about 20 different vendors at this point in time. I'm here not for myself, but for my farmers. What Deansay is doing at this point in time is delaying the market during the RFP process, telling me that the last market that I can have is June 30th. There's going to be a 10-week period that the market will be totally in limbo. During that time, it's possible I can win back the market and return to Deansay. I'm coming to the city tonight to see if there's any way that we could move back to Memorial Park during this period of time, or possibly to Torrey Avenue out here. I think that we can make it work and we're right in the middle of the peak season. All the cherries, the artichokes, the asparagus, everything's out there. We're getting upwards of 5,000, 6,000 people that attend the market at Deansay. And so I'm hoping that, once again, Cupertino could come to my rescue and help me find a home. That's pretty much my message. Everybody that is familiar with West Coast Farmers Markets know that we give back to the community. We work with West Valley Food Bank. We donate in excess of 100,000 pounds every year to the food bank. And this time of the year is the utmost importance to us to keep the market running. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Next we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Claudia Bono. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you. I have a slide. Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I want to strongly encourage you to support the market. It is a win for everybody and it's peak season. The fruits and vegetables are just top-notch and this is something you can do. Please do it. Anyway, last week, the city held the Planning Commission meeting at 6:45 here in Community Hall, and at the same time, they held the Parks and Rec Commission meeting at Quinlan. The Parks and Rec had the Lawrence Smithy Park on it, which is of concern to a lot of residents, long-awaited park. And the Planning Commission had the housing element, both of which were items very important to the residents. And yet, planning these concurrently prevented the residents to appear in person and speak to these items. Please don't do this again. It's poor planning. I was told that it was because there was a rush to get it to the city council. Well, delay one of them. The Parks and Rec was a special meeting. It could have been scheduled on another day. Please don't do this again. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next we have Lisa Warren, followed by Claudia Bono, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I hear... I'm here also in support of the city doing whatever they have in their toolbox to help the farmers market stay in business until Deansay figures this out. I know some people are concerned that it's gone from Deansay forever, but I have learned that that's not the case. There's just some maneuvering that has to be done and paperwork that has to be done. So if anyone's listening that's worried about that, it's not going to happen and I would also promote the current vendor because... Or, current... This gentleman here? To be kept at Deansay, because they've done a great job throughout the years for the city and there's other establishments that haven't been so great for us. So I would say, wholeheartedly, believe what Peggy just voiced about stacking of meetings at the same time, scheduling them where you have to pick one or the other. And I... The one thing I will disagree with is she said, "Please don't do this again." However, this isn't the first time something like this has happened. So it's important to point that out as well. Meetings need to be available, especially key meetings with key subjects that we all know are key. And, you know, it is poor planning, period. And a big job of the city is to plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next we have Claudia Bono, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Claudia.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Fruin, councilmembers, city staff, our wonderful Madam Clerk. I'm a fan of you. You needs to be underlined. Mr. City Attorney, hi. My name is Claudia Bono, Cupertino resident. I have not prepared any statement or anything, but I just wanted to put some record straight here. I enjoyed seeing the Planning Commission last week and some of my fellow residents here complaining about two commissions at once. Well, the first, the good news, the first one is that it's recorded now. Thank you, City Council, for allowing our resident to be able to listen and view it on the YouTube channel. It's wonderful. Second of all, anyone that complained until now, because my name is Claudia Bono, I do not respond to anybody, because no one can guide me on saying anything, but the truth is, I enjoy being honest with my resident and my fellow resident. And since it's an election year, people are starting to distort everything, because I've been a city commissioner for Parks and Recs and none of those people that complains have ever showed up. So that's kind of weird to me. Last but not least, I'm here to support the farmers market, love the assistance they do provide to the food bank as well. I strongly support that. I'm a Cupertino Rotarian, which means also, like, last week, I was serving meals at the homeless shelter. I'm a proud Cupertino resident that does everything and everything for my city and wanted to inform you that I finally got connected with the Californian governor right now, including aides to the President of the United States, because I do have a solution that will remediate the homeless crisis and it looks like it's taking flight. So I strongly support everything that you do for the farmers market. Thank you for the assistance for the food bank. There's a lot of people in need out there. And by the way, just wanted to say, Hungway, on behalf of thousands of people, we're happy to see you here today. We love you regardless of whatever everyone says. It's a political year, so we'll pretend to be dumb for a moment, but we genuinely love you and we're so happy to have you on this council. So thank you for being here. Although I would have preferred not to see you on video last week, I trust our city attorney does a wonderful job, but again, it seems to me that other people are... We're pushing it to have you there on video. That's my take. Last but not least, I want everybody to be ready for this meeting. So Councilmember Chow, is there a reason why there's never a report to you? Because to be honest with you, your time takes... Your fact that you're not ready for meetings takes tons of time that we should remove that. I'm not against you or supporting you. I'm just voicing you my honest opinion and I want it to be honest, because this is what I do. Okay? So have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Next we have Jean Bedord, followed by Rhoda Frye, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. Well, that's a hard act to follow. Anyway, good evening, councilmembers and staff. My name is Jean Bedord and I'm a Cupertino resident. I'm speaking tonight regarding the Sunday Farmers Market at Deansay College. As you know from the written communications you've received this meeting, the contract with the current vendor was terminated effective June 30th, just two weeks ago. Two weeks away. I'm also concerned about termination of this valuable resource for the community. While fresh fruits and vegetables can be obtained from alternative sources, I'm most concerned about the impact on West Valley Community Services. At the end of every day on Sunday, a very dedicated group of volunteers collect the leftover produce and goods at the market and transport it to West Valley Community Services, so their clients can have fresh produce on Monday morning. Last year, almost 110,000 pounds of produce were rescued. That's the equivalent of 55 tons of edible food, which otherwise would have been thrown away. So how did this happen? Well, Deansay College, like any other government organization, requires a contract which typically runs July 1st to June 30th. The college sent out its usual RFP to interested vendors, including the current operator, advertising the bid process. Only one vendor, the operator of the Creekside Farmers Market, actually completed the application form. The current vendor of the Deansay Farmers Market failed to complete the application to renew his contract, then was surprised to receive a termination letter. Well, that's the nature of the RFP process. It's messy. Successful vendors know they have to abide by the paperwork. The current vendor failed to do so. My understanding is that Deansay College is still committed to a farmers market, but legally and procedurally, it will take some time to complete the process. I urge the city to facilitate a potential gap and assist the college in their vendor process. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean. Next we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Rhoda. And then we will move to our virtual speakers.
Hi. Good evening. I concur with Peggy Griffin and Lisa Warren. You have my letters and those of many residents. Last year, West Coast Farmers Market, as you've heard, provided over 100,000 pounds of food to West Valley Community Services. They've been doing this for eight years. Through their donations, West Coast Farmers Market provides fresh fruit and vegetables to about 1,250 people weekly. If not for the West Coast Farmers Market, West Valley Community Services would have no fresh food on Mondays, its busiest day of the week. West Coast Farmers Market got its start 13 years ago in Cupertino on Sundays at the Oaks Shopping Center, moved to Memorial Park, and then to Deansay, where it has catered to the unique and diverse needs of the citizens of Cupertino. And no, replacing that market with another market would not provide the unique and diverse needs of the citizens of Cupertino. I have researched this and you know what I do when I do research. Sadly, on June 14th, Deansay College decided the last day of the market would be June 30th. The bid actually came in on June 10th for a contract that ends on June 30th. That is just unheard of for farmers who have been planting their crops six months ahead of time. Nevertheless, that means that West Valley Community Services will need money to buy food. That means that Cupertino residents will be deprived of the fresh and affordable food and that means over 40 small family farms and vendors will be put out of business. All of this is happening during peak growing season. Please find a permanent and affordable home for our Sunday Farmers Market. But there's more. The market has received free rent and pays for a porta potty. The market at West Valley College pays $300 a week and has access to public restrooms. Deansay College is now asking for unaffordable rent to support its budget on the backs of small bok choy farmers. By canceling the farmers market, the district is turning its back on agriculture roots of the University of California, which it serves. The UC system is a land-grant university based on the 1862 Moral Act, the purpose of which was to benefit agriculture and mechanical arts. The education provided by UC has helped sustain California's $37.5 billion farm industry. Please, support the residents and the small farmers and do what you can to ensure an affordable and permanent home for the farmers market on July 7th and preferably well before that, so we can notify all of our wonderful residents who go to the market and enjoy the unique and diverse offerings that it has. West Coast Farmers Market has been a gem to this community and let's help ourselves by keeping them here. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Next we have Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Luis.
Good evening. I want to thank everyone here, including the city staff, for moving the rezonings forward expeditiously in order to achieve a compliant housing element. The housing element is a key piece of the puzzle in how we build a better, more inclusive, more affordable, and more vibrant Cupertino for all. Most of the rezonings makes reasonable sense, but a number of them could use further revisions. First, the story restriction in R4 should be struck in accordance with the preferred recommendations offered by the commissioners, Linsckog and Mistry, in the Planning Commission. Striking the requirement will allow for greater architectural freedom and create more opportunities for less expensive housing. Regarding R2, please remove the new... housing. Regarding R2, please remove the new restrictive definition of a duplex, requiring duplexes to be no more than 200 feet larger than each other. Two, reduce parking restrictions to four total per parcel instead of the six required under present R2. Expand permissible lot coverage to 50% from the current 40%. Reduce interior side yard setbacks to five feet in line with the R1 minimum standards. Abolish minimum lot sizes. This will help build a more vibrant, inclusive community with vibrant, growing, and growing, not declining, school enrollments, because we will have more of a housing base to allow younger families that have children that could utilize their schools. So, please be part of the solution with what we have in moving Cupertino forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. And now we will move to our participants requesting to speak virtually. There are six people who had their hands raised before the nine-minute cutoff. Caller 1-820, Yvonne Thorstensen, and Kamya Masyan. We'll start with those three. Welcome caller 1-820. Please unmute yourself. Okay, we may have to, okay.
So, yeah, okay. Anybody help me?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmembers and residents, I'm just one of the one family member. I want to mention two things. One about farmers market, and I heard different people, they have concerns with in the market, move away or not be there. Actually, I kind of know, like one lady mentioned, it's basically, it's more like a different venue, a different location. You know, I don't think the city will actually will let them be out of the city. So, that's, I think that will, the rest of residents should be live more, have a little bit comfort on that. I don't think they should, too much thinking it should be down from the city. So, that's one I'd mention. I just found that we are the long-term residents, which is by all the different markets in different cities, how it come, go, different locations. So, that's my input on that. Another thing is about, I know people thinking about the market, the things, we actually have something even more, even more tragic. I think that some people follow our case. We are the weak party in the city because we speak up for some kind of overreach, and all rights were deprived. So, we also want all the community give us encouragement to get all rights back, and also the council members, please speak up for us. So, I think people know the matter, probably follow us. But anyway, feel free to talk to us as well, and that's the important thing I mentioned today. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Yvonne Thorstensen, followed by Kamya Masyan, followed by Sean Hughes. Welcome, Yvonne.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Yvonne Thorstensen, and I would like to follow up on what Louise Sadati mentioned about the housing element. I'm very, very pleased with the way that the rezoning process is moving forward on getting a housing element implemented in Cupertino. I'm a long-term homeowner and a parent of two children who went to Regnart Elementary School, which is now closed because of low enrollment. So, I'm really, really hoping to do my part to move the city forward into the future, to build housing that is more affordable and inclusive for new families. So, a couple of things that I think are important for that is revise parking standards, for one, because overly restrictive parking requirements severely limit the type of housing that can be built and make it more expensive. And secondly, when it's reasonable, it makes sense to allow for more architectural flexibility. This is like, for instance, removing the story restrictions in R4 zones, as recommended by the, by two members of the Planning Commission. Also, allow single-family zones to develop under duplex standards, because the current ones are too restrictive. And finally, expand lot coverage in R3 zones. These type of changes, or tweaks, let's call them tweaks, to the housing, to the zoning requirements will help to smooth over and expedite new housing in our neighborhoods, so that our schools can go back to being our neighborhood school, and more families and more people can be included in our Cupertino community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next we have Kamya Masyan, followed by Sean Hughes, followed by Jennifer Shirin. Welcome, Kamya.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, staff and council. My name is Kamya Masyan, and I also wanted to speak to the city's ongoing efforts to address our devastating housing crisis. In the past months, you all took the important step of approving an ambitious housing element. But as you know, the work doesn't end there. The city needs to make our city's plan for the future a reality by implementing appropriate rezoning that advance the goal of affirmatively furthering fair housing. This means going through the code and removing needless restrictions that make it harder to build housing without meaningfully improving health, safety, and welfare of the community. It also means not inadvertently imposing new restrictions that have that effect. Now, I think Louise and Yvonne already mentioned a few good examples of this. I wanted to highlight, though, the, some of the duplex provisions that were proposed in the recent, that were in the recent proposal. Previously, the code had pretty open-ended language that just said that duplexes need to be of comparable size, and the current proposal would redefine that to be within 200 square feet of one another. And in my view, this basically has the effect of creating a new restriction where none existed before. It really takes what had been a vague and probably unenforceable standard and rigidly puts it to a 200-square-foot minimum, a maximum variation. And I imagine the result of this is that there's going to be a lot of duplexes in Cupertino that are non-conforming. And I think it's a little strange that we're going to come through this whole process where one of the goals was to make it easier to get the housing that we need as a community while we're creating new restrictions like that. So, I would strongly encourage council and staff to go through and make sure that we're not inadvertently making it harder to build housing, who can actually implement the goals of this ambitious housing element. I know there's a lot of hard work going into these rezonings. I know this has to be a very deliberative process, but I hope that we can watch out for instances like that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Sean Hughes, followed by Jennifer Shirin. And welcome, Sean.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I'm Sean, former resident, and would like to just full-heartedly endorse and agree with a lot of the comments previously voiced around the draft rezoning proposals that were put forth last week in the Planning Commission meeting. I think other commentators have really addressed this in detail, but I think that the sphere, the main takeaway here is that I really hope that council can take a look at the draft proposals and be sure to assess that we're not being overly prescriptive in a manner that's going to inadvertently lead to bad outcomes. And ultimately, I think we, in the housing element that we approved, we want to create more opportunities for housing, and therefore create more opportunities for affordable housing, and for people to, that previously may be excluded from moving to Cupertino, starting families here, starting lives here, you know, giving them that, that opportunity to do so, whether it's rental or for ownership. And I hope that they can take a close look at these draft proposals and address, address things that might be duplicative around height limits or story limitations in the R4 zone, as mentioned. I would really be thrilled if we would, again, look at parking standards in a manner that is consistent with some of the language that's used in our planning action plan, so that language doesn't just become lip service to a vague notion of sustainability that isn't really backed by any, any policies with teeth to them. And, and as mentioned earlier, some of the R3 standards, and generally avoiding the imposition of new regulations where they didn't exist before. So, I really appreciate the effort here and the attention to detail, and hope to see, hope to see some of these provisions looked at again. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final two speakers with their hands raised before the nine-minute cutoff were Sandana Siva and Sanar. Welcome, Sandana.
Hi. So, I would like to piggyback on, I'm Sandana Siva, I'd like to piggyback on what Sean, Yvonne, and Louise have been talking about. And like, I think it's really important that we support like more of the R4 zoning requirements, because like, I'm really like interested like in conservation, and having like, larger buildings than like taller buildings will stop like, like suburban sprawl, and will not like impede more like wildlife habitats, like the ones that we have here, like the Fremont Older Open Space Preserve. And it will like also like, help like increase the amount of groundwater percolation areas since we live like in like a drought prone area like California. So, I think, listening to what Planning Commissioners Linsckog and Mistri have said regarding the height requirements for the R4 zoning is really important. And then secondly, for the R2 zoning, I think there should be also like less restrictions on the, like lot sizes and what is defined as a duplex, because like this can create more housing opportunities for people in Cupertino, and then we don't have to like sprawl outwards, and we can like contain growth. And then I think there is some concern about like the congestion that would come out of these projects. So, like I personally, I would recommend some like transportation, like demand, like management plan, like if that's possible. Like, I guess like in main corridors, like Stevens Creek, like increasing the amount of like rapid transit to, to control the congestion. And, yeah, I think we should, yeah, we should also like minute, like get rid of the parking minimum, so we could get more space into the area, get more space for housing in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. And I inadvertently skipped Jennifer Shirin, who I had already mentioned is in the queue, so I will call on Jennifer, and then Sanar. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan, council members, and city staff, and thank you, Kirsten, for letting me speak. Kirsten, for letting me speak. I'm speaking tonight as a long-term resident of Cupertino and as someone that has followed the housing element process for many years, getting to this point. Thank you to staff and our council for making our housing element compliant. As many speakers have said, the work's not done yet. We still need to change some city zoning. And staff has proposed several zoning changes, and we're most of the way there, but there's a few changes that would make it easier for us to build housing for people of all ages here in Cupertino. These were discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting, and I'd like to just talk a little bit mainly about duplexes, which are a great way to add housing here. This is a personal issue for many current residents, including myself, not just lines in a zoning document that don't have real-world implications. My daughter, for example, who lives with us right now, could really use a small duplex to move into, which there are nowhere near enough supply today in Cupertino. We would certainly welcome a higher supply. To encourage more of these to be built or converted, there's some common sense changes which have been discussed to the zoning to make it easier. These include not requiring the duplexes to be within 200 feet of each other, as making a smaller home attached to a current larger home could be useful for many households of one or two people. I could even see that a couple currently living here in Cupertino, like myself, may want to downsize, but stay on the same property near friends and neighbors. But then they would have a younger family move into the larger home. This is also the case for lot coverage. We need to be more generous. Go to 50%, have the same setback of five feet, which we have for, I know, current residential single-family homes. Not require a minimum lot size, because, you know, we're already constrained in other ways. Last, parking. It's a hot-button issue. We all know this. People really love their parking. But we need to consider whether we really should require three parking spaces for each duplex. Two seems like they would be sufficient. So, if you own more than two cars per household, parking on the street would probably be your overflow. Let's make it easier for people of all ages to have housing that works for them here in Cupertino. And by making these changes, that'll happen. Thank you for considering my input and for your work on behalf of Cupertino. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. And next we have Sanar. Welcome, San.
Evening, Mayor Sheila, and city council members. The housing element window for comments has long since closed. The housing element draft has gone through multiple rounds of review with HCD. HCD has given provisional approval for the housing element draft, and now is not the time to reopen this can of worms. What is, what is happening here in terms of public comments today, as well as the two council majority-appointed planning commissioners, opening all of these issues in the last minute is basically a vote of no confidence in our city's planning department. What we're witnessing right now is Vice Chair Linsckog and Commissioner Mistri second-guessing the capable and efficient work that was done by our city planning department led by Luke Conley and Pugh Gosh. There were months and months of comment windows that were open. None of these comments were raised. There were months of iterations when public input was sought in community meetings, and none of those inputs came in at that time. And when the window has closed and it's time to get our approval, it now appears that we are second-guessing and reopening this whole process. This kind of last-minute reopening of comments, especially coordinated en masse, as we are witnessing today, puts in risk our housing element approval. I ask you to please efficiently and without any changes pass the rezoning that is required, so that Luke and Pugh may take this to HCD and get us our final approval. I also ask you to please look into any potential violations of the Brown Act in allowing Commissioner Mistri to attend from Wholesville, New York. Was the meeting published, was the location open and accessible to residents of Cupertino, was an agenda published at that location? It is important that we do not violate our own procedures that we set for ourselves for critical meetings like these. In fact, the course of that meeting could have been very different if Commissioner Mistri was not allowed to attend remotely. That meeting would have efficiently passed the recommendations of city staff. All motions would have unanimously passed, and we would not be looking at reopening the housing element at the last minute. Once again, I urge you, any kind of reopening here is a vote of no confidence in Luke Conley and Pugh Gosh and Chad Mosley. This is not the time to do that. Please support our staff when they need it the most. Pass the housing element efficiently, and do not risk rejection of our housing element with late-breaking changes. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And Mayor, no additional speakers on this item.
Okay, so that ends the oral communication section of the agenda, and thank you for, to everyone who participated in person as well as on Zoom. We have some comments. Vice Mayor Fruin.
So, to the city manager, we had quite a number of comments that have been submitted with respect to the Deansah with respect to the Deans Flea Market. And I was hoping that maybe staff could bring back either an informational item on the topic or other action to us with respect to finding at least some sort of space for them during the interim period while they are applying for their RFP.
We can certainly do that.
Do you need a second for it as a?
It would be nice to have a second. And also for clarification, is there a time urgency?
Since they they do seem to have a hard deadline of the 30th of June to no longer be there, it would be nice to be able to not see a gap in service. So the sooner the better.
Yeah. Councilmember Moore?
I do second that. I just want to clarify, it is the farmer's market. Yeah, not not the flea market.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. But I totally agree with that. And I actually did the ribbon cutting when it moved over to Deans College to begin with. So I I hope that they can have a new location and and to echo Vice Mayor's request, we if we can not have any gaps, that would be really ideal. And and I want to thank the farmer's market for providing so much food for West Valley Community Services. That's a really good thing they're doing.
I just wanted to add one thing to the the direction the Vice Mayor and and Councilmember Moore are proposing. Will the can you come back and the city staff come back with cost information? Because if there is a city involvement, there is a city cost.
So so I'm going to sort of end this discussion here because this is not on the agenda.
Okay.
Apologies, mayor.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and let's just vote by lights.
Well, it's not an action.
Oh, it's not an actionable. Okay. So we're we're done? Or did you need to make a comment?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chow?
So many people spoke on the housing element. I would like to ask the city manager when it will come to the council agenda.
It's tentatively scheduled for 2nd of July.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Madam City Manager, have any items been pulled?
Yes, mayor. Item number 11 was pulled by Councilmember Chow and item number 12 was pulled by Vice Mayor Fruen.
Okay. And Vice Mayor Fruen, would you like to explain why you pulled it?
Sure. So at the the time of my request, there wasn't a staff report or or presentation. So in the interest of transparency, I just wanted to daylight what the the nature and the scope is of the the authority that's being requested.
Okay. And Councilmember Chow for item number 11?
Yeah, there were questions from the public that they would like answered.
Would it be okay if we moved 12 up and brought 11 after 12? Just because I'm envisioning a longer discussion on item number 12. If it's okay with the council, I'd like to go 10, 12, 11.
Clarification, mayor, number 10 did not get pulled.
No, I understand that. The order was what I was referring to.
Did you mean that you would like number 12 and 11 to go before action calendar and public hearing?
Yes. And interchange the two items.
Is that a a motion, mayor?
That is my motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Wei, you had your light on?
One second.
Okay. Okay. Let's vote by lights, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Okay, now we are on to cal consent, oh yeah, public comments on the consent calendar.
Yes, mayor, I have Jennifer Griffin wishes to speak on items two and four on the consent calendar. And I currently see no hands raised virtually to speak on any items. Jennifer, would you like to come up and speak on items two and four?
Thank you, city council. I still get confused about what we do with consent, but I think I understand. Number two, we're calling for a general municipal election with two city council seats open. I request that everyone look very, very carefully about who is sponsoring candidates and where the money is coming from. I am very, very concerned about the overall intent of YIMBY action locally, at the state level and federally. I do not believe that they are a they are growing into something that is going to harm this country. I I have studied them for almost 10 years now and they are very, very dangerous. I'm going to throw up for growth in there, too, because the money's coming out of tech and I know where it's coming from and we don't know why, but they're sponsoring the coastal commission, Bell's Wieners trying to get control of the coast to give it to federal. So do your diligence. Remember what this country was founded on, the choices that people came here willingly or unwillingly. Protect your country in all ways. Protect your state. Question your government, and I include our governor, our senators, our assembly, our president. Do your own diligence, and if it sounds like something the ancestors would have been concerned about it, you're probably right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And mayor, no further requests to speak on this, on the consent calendar items.
Are there?
I'm sorry, I'm so upset.
I believe she wished to speak on item four as well.
This is very distressing for me. Okay, number four, I think is bike.
They believe she had a minute left.
Yes, I had a minute left, okay? You cannot begin to understand how distressing all of this is for me. I had 55 seconds. Number four is the bike again. And I really hate being insulted all the time about that I should ride a bike. That's my choice and all I hear continuously is, everyone should ride a bike. It's so great. Well, if it was so great, I want horses back, okay? Sorry, they're good enough for Queen Elizabeth. I want to make sure that anything we're doing with this bike plan, that we have money for it. And I do not want Bollinger Road to be less than two lanes in each direction. Bollinger Road, we're working out with the city of San Jose, and it's not appropriate for Cupertino to dictate what happens because my mother-in-law lives in San Jose and she hates what they're trying to do to Bollinger. Thank you.
Thank you. And mayor, no further requests to speak on on the consent calendar items.
Okay. So that ends the public comments on the consent calendar. And let's do we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar items one through 10? Councilmember Fruen?
One through 10 and? I think 13 as well.
13 is a public hearing.
Yeah, it's a public hearing. Consent calendar one through 10, please.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Councilmember Wei?
Second.
Okay. Let's vote by lights.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Okay, so let's move to the public hearings.
Mayor, I believe there was a a motion to hear item 12 next.
Are we going to do 12? All right. Item number 12 then, sorry, which is to consider acquisition of property located at 19400 Stevens Creek Boulevard and appointment of real property negotiator for acquisition of property. City Manager Pamlo.
Thank you, mayor. I also have the presentation that was part of the supplemental that went out to council on Monday. Kirsten Vikian kindly pulled it up. Council and member community, I want to thank you for the opportunity to have a discussion on this item. So this is a authority asking council to delegate a negotiation right to me to begin the negotiation on the particular property. Next slide. Some background information, many of you will remember that this has been a discussion before council for a number of years, reason being that we do have aging infrastructure at the city hall that needs a seismic retrofitting and also it is inadequate to accommodate a number of staff that is currently within the organization. There has been a effort by the council to convene a subcommittee to look at options, different options to either renovate, build, or expand to accommodate our needs. And the estimate for these options range as little as $7 million and that is a seismic retrofit only to up to potentially $28 million to include all the other necessary improvement to accommodate the current need or as high as $80 million to build a brand new city hall. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the number of a council discussion has been outlined in this slide. In November of 2022, council gave direction to go ahead and renovate the current city hall in addition to renovate the Torrey Avenue Annex building to accommodate the needs for seismic upgrade and whatnot. Subsequently, the item was brought back to city council for another round of discussion. At the time, council made a decision to suspend any further design work needed for both city hall and Torrey Avenue Annex and direct the staff to explore other options to further this ask. By last fall, council gave staff the instruction to go ahead and explore the options of public private partnership in terms of how to move forward. And that was the last council direction to ask staff to continue to look into that. I should emphasize that that work has never stopped. So that ask has always remained in staff mind, especially in my mind. Community members and council may ask, hey, we have a structural deficit with our budget. How can we afford that? So what I would like to emphasize is that what I'm asking today is just a negotiation right. I'm not asking council or the community members to even consider purchasing the property. And why would this be a good time, you ask? Just when we have a balanced budget. This is the most imminent problem that has faced both community members, staff, and city council for some time. And I really again want to emphasize my appreciation for council for taking the budget in a very swift motion last council meeting. With that done, I can concentrate on looking at this effort again. Several reasons, and I just kind of want to point out the reasons for this property in particular. This is an opportunity. As we know, post pandemic, office markets is soft. This is an opportunity for a city to look into a potential interim city hall. While we could potentially ask council to launch a visioning process for our current city hall process. We don't know what's going to happen with our city hall, but it takes a lot more discussion and engagement and the conversation with every stakeholders to figure out our future. But our safety is also concerning. So with this potential property, it could be a safer option as an interim city hall. Next slide. Do I have a next slide? So that said, thank you. That said, this property presents as an interim solution as a turnkey office space located at 19400 Stevens Creek Boulevard. It's roughly 1.2 acres, 20,000 square feet, just about 1,000 square feet shy of our current city hall size, and it's accessible location to the community located on Stevens Creek Boulevard and could again serve as an interim city hall while the visioning process is launched for the actual civic plaza. Next slide. So the ask for council tonight is to authorize me as the lead negotiator to start looking into the potential of acquiring this property. And this concludes my very short, brief presentation. More than happy to take any questions that you may have.
Okay, let's bring it back to council. And if you have any questions for city manager, let's go with five minutes each, please. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So I did email the city at 2:30. I don't see my comments in written communications, but I will read my email. I've attached the cost estimates from the 2022 city hall subcommittee, which council member Willie and myself served on, which showed the costs for seismic retrofitting of the current city hall to category four essential structure at approximately $7 million. The plan at that time was to remodel the Torrey Annex, which the city owns, and to relocate the emergency operations center to the center of that, the Torrey Annex building, and additionally move permitting to that location. The city hall was then to have a renovation to risk category four essential structure. However, it could simply be seismically retrofitted to category four essential structure for much less. 19400 Stevens Creek Boulevard was built in 1979 under building code seismic design standards at that time. Has there been a recent structural design report conducted on 19400 to determine what structural improvements would be needed in order to obtain risk category four essential structural design for the building? Because the emergency operations center would presumably be relocated to this building. And what is the cost estimate for any seismic retrofit? Have there been any inspections recently conducted on the property which may indicate impending maintenance costs such as roofing, HVAC, or plumbing? There is a flyer available online for 19400 Stevens Creek Boulevard showing the current floor plan configuration of that building, which I have attached. I've also attached the current city hall floor plan. The Stevens Creek Boulevard building is actually a smaller building by about 4,000 square feet. Is there an expectation that the interior would need to be remodeled to reconfigure the floor plan? Is there a cost estimate for this? And additionally, 19400 has 75 parking spaces and no on-street parking available on Stevens Creek Boulevard. I have attached the parking study pages from the city hall subcommittee report, which show that the current city hall has 84 parking spaces along with on-street parking. Will there be a parking deficit at 19400 Stevens Creek Boulevard? And lastly, would the sheriffs be relocating to this particular location or are you looking at another location for that? Thank you.
Councilmember Wei?
Will I have my questions answered?
So let me make them first.
Well, I I think that we are in council member questions at this point, mayor. So I think councilmember Moore has about two and a half minutes left to have her questions answered.
So councilmember Moore, thank you for your email. We did receive it this afternoon and it's also included in a written communication. So there are certain questions I can answer, but there are certain questions I cannot. As I mentioned, I'm asking for the negotiation authority to begin that. I'll certainly come back with the responses to the more detailed questions that you've outlined today. However, this $7 million for a seismic only retrofitting, my understanding is that that is as if the city was only to do $7 million of seismic retrofitting. However, per building code, once that work is initiated, there will be other code compliant and also repair necessary, which my understanding of that slide is that will bump up to about $28 million. Leave alone the renovation cost of about $8 million for Torrey. That's my understanding from staff. In terms of emergency operations center at the 19400 Stevens Creek, it will not be there given that this is an interim solution. I do not know if there's any report inspection. As I mentioned, we will certainly come back with those information when the ask of council to make that final purchase. And lastly, the sheriff will not be locating, at least it's not the the current proposal to this to this proposed location.
Thank you. So with regards to the à la carte options that the city council was given, bring those up. So the city hall renovation seismic only for So the city hall renovation seismic-only for an essential facility was projected at 7.35 million. The city hall renovation, if it were to be for a non-essential facility, which is what I would presume the 19400 is, it's probably, since built in 1979, it's probably a category-two building. If we're not moving the EOC to that location, then we don't have the category-four structure within the city, as far as I know. And then we're going to need to find, once again, another location for the EOC, and we're looking at the same problem. So where then is the EOC going to go if it's not at 19400?
I would recommend against putting the EOC in an interim city hall. So potentially, we could consider adding the EOC back at this property or some other regional location as the council launches the reimagining of city hall property.
Thank you. So essentially, we haven't gotten to the risk category four essential facility. Problem still exists.
Councilmember Chow. Five minutes, please.
So with the purchase of this property, we are not thinking of moving the city hall there permanently. This will only serve as an interim city hall.
That is correct.
Okay. So are you proposing that we move the city hall over there? It sounds like you are proposing we move it there while we're envisioning the current site.
That could be an option.
But then that means we would be leaving the current city hall empty, but the envisioning process sometimes will take one or two years. So why are we not finishing our envisioning while we are still in the current location? It seems we don't need to move to an interim location until we figure out.
That's certainly up to council's discretion. As I mentioned, there are three reasons for this ask. Opportunity for a soft office market. This could potentially be a good investment on the city's part. This could serve as an interim solution.
So it's an option, but we may not have to move there, right? We're in order to envision the current site. It's an option.
It's certainly council's discretion, but there is no seismic retrofitting needed for this current facility.
And the EOC in the current city hall can still serve as EOC while we have the interim in the news.
We can certainly discuss in that separate process. Again, I kind of want to bring the ask back to council is to allow me to proceed with the negotiation. I'm not asking council to make that purchase tonight.
But I think the public would need to know, because once you start negotiating, likely the next step will be potential purchase. And there is already an announcement for a closed session tomorrow. So I think public would want to know. I mean, starting negotiating is an intent to purchase.
That is true.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wei, five minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. So I want to bring back to the history of why we're doing this. We are sitting, our staff are sitting in a building that, for the past decade, has at least five reports says it's not seismic safe. So we are looking for interim solutions. And I believe, because of Mayor, I'm sorry. City Manager Wu, this is just an ask for you to start a negotiation. It is, there's no definite plans, and when it comes back to us, we can look at how good the deal is or not good the deal is, and we don't want to do this, want to do that. There is plenty of opportunity for public to ask questions, for city council to ask questions, and for them to make decisions or even ask further discussions. Is that the intent?
Certainly.
Okay. So I want to bring back to the public and the councils. We are responsible for our staff's safety. And I do believe that an interim solution is needed while we're figuring out how can we either renovate the current city hall or rebuild or whatever. We need time. As councilmember Chow says, we need time to really look at options. While we're doing this time, looking into options, we need to make sure our staff work in a safe place. And our residents who go into the city hall to do business are in a safe place. So I believe what we're doing right now, or I want to commend our city manager for opening up new opportunities, but it could be we can eventually we say we're not going to do it, right? Okay, but if we are going to do it, there are going to be good reasons for us to do it. We can explore all those reasons. Councilmember Moore's questions can all be part of the explorations.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. I'm going to reserve my two minutes.
Councilmember Chow.
How much time I have, I don't remember. So what's the timeline for decision-making?
Two and a half minutes.
Two and a half, oh, thank you. What's the timeline for decision-making? And I assume the council meeting, if we move the interim city hall there, council meeting will still be held in this council chamber? So the parking, we don't need as much parking over there, right?
I don't know if I can give a complete answer to that question. There's no plan for this building, I want to clarify. There's no plan for this building.
So we're staying here, okay. Yeah. And what's the timeline for the decision-making process?
Like I said, this is a soft office market. I think we should, I mean, if council agrees, we should take advantage of that.
I mean, do we have to make an offer by a certain time or to take advantage of this opportunity? I do think it's a good opportunity to consider. Thank you for bringing it forward. So, but is there a timeline?
That would all hinge it up on council's decision in a closed session tomorrow and tonight's decision.
Okay. Thank you. My question to city manager. This is the very first step that we are taking in this process, right? And I'm assuming there'll be many more steps when you bring it back to us. And at any point in the discussions, we feel this is not a good idea. We can pull out of the whole deal.
That is true. So without the approval tonight, I will not have the ability to negotiate. With the approval tonight, I could start the negotiation process with the seller and through the agent and potentially have closed session conversation with council on where it goes. And then we'll definitely come back when council is ready to make the final purchase.
Okay. So today's action is to just give you the authority to negotiate.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Frue.
Would it be appropriate to cast your request here essentially as a matter of good housekeeping? In essence, we're required to oversee you as one of our two employees, right? So your time is very valuable. What you do with it matters. And engaging in a discussion for the purchase of a property really requires something more than just talking to people. It requires our consent that you spend your time in that fashion. Is that a good way of looking at what you're asking for?
That is a very generous way of describing the exercise. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Okay. I see no other lights. So we should move forward with the action, which is to appoint city manager Pamlo. Public comments. Okay, it's time for public comments, and sorry about that.
Yes, Mayor, I have six requests to speak in community hall, and I see one hand currently raised virtually. We have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Jennifer.
Three minutes, please.
Good evening, city council. First of all, you want to make sure that that building is seismically stable. I've been looking at that building for probably 25 years. I think it was built, may have been built before the 1989 earthquake. I'm not sure. But you want, believe me, I was at Deans when the 89 hit. A lot of things moved around here. There were a lot of buildings that fell down on Deans Boulevard while the employees of the tech companies were standing there because there weren't enough nails in the building. We're not going to go into that. I don't really want to have city hall moved. I think it would be difficult for the staff. Okay, if you're planning on having city council meetings here, they're going to be down there. Okay, so that means rather than being able to walk in from the building, they're going to have to cart everything, and I don't know where you're planning on putting them. Rent portables or rent some of the other empty office space around here. I really don't want this envisioned city hall thing. This came up, oh my God, this has been coming back like every three to four years. I don't want housing on the city hall. That is ridiculous. I've never heard of a city hall that had housing on top of it. Don't even think about it. The city hall belongs to Cupertino. It is not anyone's to give away. We don't want public-private with it. And how come there was no staff report on this item? We had to go looking into some document that was at the end of it. We didn't know why you were looking at this building. That building had a church in it one time. It's a nice office building. It has a shared parking lot with Bank of America, and I believe that there's another building or two back there. To me, this is, we don't really care about city hall. We're just going to go prancing down Stevens Creek Boulevard and try to buy another building because people that are not on the city council are telling us things we're supposed to do. I frankly don't want it to be near Valco. Valco has caused enough problems in the city that I want the city hall to be where the city hall has always been. We wouldn't think of putting housing on top of the library. Why would we put housing on top of the city hall? I wish, I really wish this thing would go away. And they rebuilt the Castro adobe in Watsonville just recently, so it's seismically stable. There's an elevator, and they did it in two years for $500,000. Let's seismically stable our city hall and put our people back in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Claudia Bono. Welcome, Peggy.
Sorry. Good evening, councilmembers and staff. It feels like this is the cart before the horse, that there is no plan. You're just going to go buy a building, spend some money. You don't know if it's seismically safe. You don't, it's actually 4,000 square feet smaller. And you don't know what you're going to do here at this building, city hall, before you move. This just doesn't make sense. Have a plan first. The other thing I don't understand is, if it's interim, why not rent? You said the office is soft. So rent should be soft. Rent rather than purchase, save some money. I also am frustrated that we had to ask for this thing to be pulled, that there was no information, no idea that it was city hall this was for. There were rumors flying all over the place, not very transparent, and there's no plan. Have a plan first before you go negotiate and purchase a building. Rent, look into rent. There are some buildings close by where staff could be close to community hall and wouldn't have to be driving back and forth. That's all I have to say. I just am floored. I am not for a public-private partnership with this property here. This is public land, and it works really well to have the library, the field, community hall, and city hall. Not housing, not some developers' stuff here. This is for the city, and it's right here in the center or pretty close to the center. Don't give it up. Don't even think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Claudia Bono, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Yeah, floored. I heard the word turnkey from city manager. Turnkey means you're ready to move in, it's just as you need it. This building is not going to be turnkey in any way, shape, or form. Just think about that. Okay. I heard the term, it's a statement, it could be a safer location. Could be a safer location. In my mind, there's already negotiating going on because a meeting has been scheduled with the property owner for tomorrow. Why would the property owner agree to meet if there hadn't already been some speaking about this potential idea? I see so many things that are disturbing about how this has been done. Whether the ultimate plan is horrible is yet to be seen. But the presentation, or shall I say, the lack of presentation for this plan, consent calendar with no information other than a couple sentences to allow for negotiation of a purchase of a property. My God. What is, what is that thinking? How is that, how is that okay? And tomorrow's meeting, by the way, it's a holiday. Why are you having a meeting on a holiday? This is odd to me. When I saw it on there, but I wasn't sure until the mayor spoke this morning, this afternoon, evening, about tomorrow being a city holiday, I don't understand why there's a meeting going on. So I would suggest that you not allow this meeting to happen tomorrow because it needs to be much better vetted what is really going on here. Current proposal was another phrase used. That's interesting. And envisioning a city hall, as we know, has already taken more than a decade, and nothing's been done. Keep talking about the concerns about our employees, but everything keeps getting pushed aside, pushed aside. A few years ago, two years ago, maybe, we had the great plan of, okay, everybody agreed, this is the good way to move forward. Well, everyone, but some. And it's just being reinvented over and over again. I agree with rent versus, and this building's been on the market for four years.
Thank you, Lisa.
Right now, and in such a hurry.
And next, we have Claudia Bono, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Claudia.
Good evening, everybody. Claudia Bono here. I heard some people like Rhoda Frye do some odd noises when our councilmember Wei actually mentioned about the safety of the staff. I found that odd. Rhoda, I'm putting you on the spot. So for everyone else, again, today's action is just to allow our city manager to negotiate. How can I put that to maybe some of my fellow resident? Well, like a hotel, you can go and visit one. That doesn't mean you're going to book it, okay? So, anyway, for everyone else, again, today's action is just to allow our city manager to negotiate, simply that. It's been years in the making, doom if we try something, doom if we don't. Ooh, tomorrow is Juneteenth. Jesus, Lord, that sounds like such a conspiracy. Personally, I think that a lot of our resident would do a great business in Hollywood. So, again, today, this is a, this year, once again, it's an election year. So for me, once again, I think that it's a time again for carnival barkers, oops, I'm sorry. I meant resident to, that are unhappy again, to voice their frustration or whatever is happening. I feel sometimes this is a therapy session where people vent out everything to feel better. But the reality is, is just a simple action is to allow our wonderful city manager to simply negotiate, simply that. The rest will be brought back to council. That is it. That's as simple as that, so let's keep it simple like everything should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Jean.
Well, once again, I follow Claudia. Good evening, city council and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, elder president of Cupertino. I urge you to go right ahead and go into me. I urge you to go right ahead and go into negotiation for this property. It's a great time to look at commercial real estate. Office space is going begging. So let's cut a good deal. You know, this City Hall situation has been under discussion for at least a decade or longer. Building a new City Hall, even if you have agreement, takes years. This is the most expedient means of addressing the issue of safety for our staff in a building that is not seismically safe. Now, I went through building a new library and we had to move all of those books and all of those materials to a new location. I think we even asked patrons to check out books and keep them in their homes because we had so much material. And then we were done. We had to move everything back. Both of them were expensive propositions. So the same thing's going to happen here. So let's go ahead and move the staff into a seismically safe building to be determined by our city manager and all of the rest of the staff. I'm sure they'll do a great job. And then above all, I urge you to move quickly. The real estate market changes and you need to be able to be flexible and catch the deal as you best can. Thank you.
Thank you Jean. Next, we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome Rhoda.
Hi, good evening again. Hopefully I can read my chicken scratch. I concur with the comments from Jennifer, Peggy, and Lisa. I apologize for my outburst. However, I'm stunned and outraged. I do appreciate the council member Moore's deep knowledge of the City Hall issues and her professional training as a civil engineer. Guess what? Our City Hall was unscathed during the 89 quake while at my home, all the windows broke and the sink leapt off my bathroom wall. Troubled that this was on consent calendar and it was not on the work plan. Are we projecting a positive outcome from the City TFA audit while at the same time we're cutting resident services? I'm also troubled that the city made an agreement with a real estate company at least a couple of weeks ago, seen in the, on public record with agreements. Again, not coming to City Council. And now there's a closed session meeting tomorrow. So it does seem like the cart is before the horse, so to speak. And to reiterate Peggy's comment, why on earth would we buy an interim building instead of renting? We know the market is soft, we can rent. And finally, as you know, and as others have mentioned, I am vehemently against these public-private partnerships that pimp our public properties for developer profits. Finally, if I were on the dais, I would vote no, and I hope you too, too. Thank you.
Thank you Rhoda. And we have one person requesting to speak virtually, that is San Ar. Welcome San.
Evening Mayor Sheila and council members. So many questions puzzled the public tonight. Why was this item on consent calendar? Do we believe that a major decision of buying an office building should just go by without public discussion and public input? Should an item be on consent calendar to go spend millions of dollars to buy an office building? Why was this on consent calendar? Why was this without any attachment? There's no information for the public, no staff report, no disclosures on the property, no information on what debt the property will have. Are you going to assume the seller's debt? Do you need to go get debt on this property? In this market, you're getting no debt on office right now. What kind of deferred maintenance does this building have? What kind of toxic exposure does this building have? What maintenance do you need to do before staff can move in? And why would we need to buy when we can rent? In this condition, with 20% vacancy in the market, you should be able to strike a really good deal to rent at a really low cost. And we have the City Hall annex. Why don't we use the City Hall annex? We also haven't seen any metrics on what percentage of staff actually occupy the City Hall on a day-to-day basis. Has there been a return to office mandate? How many days in a week are staff back in the office? What is the occupation? What is the occupancy percentage? Without all of this data, we're rushing into a consent calendar item. The vote that you pass today will be closely watched by the public. It will give the public yet another reason to view their candidates in November and see who supports common sense and resident interest and who defies common sense. Who supports the public versus who lectures the public? And I ask you, this is coming on the heels of just passing a budget where for months we were told we need to cut costs, we need to make sacrifices, we need to cut programs, we just had fees hike, we almost had a tax that luckily was given up on. And after all those sacrifices the residents had to go through, including the removal of July 4th fireworks, we now have money to spend on an office building? For what? Let's please be frugal. Let's be fiscally austere. Let's not be buyers of office buildings in a market where nobody's buying office buildings. Please vote on this issue, knowing that in November, this will be an issue you'll be voted on. Thank you.
Thank you San. Mayor, no additional requesting, people requesting to speak on this item.
Okay. All right. So that ends the public comments portion of, for this item. So let's bring it back to council and for discussion purposes, could we go with a motion? Is there a motion for discussion purposes only, just to sort of focus on this item?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Council member Wei.
I'll second it.
Okay. Great. So we have a motion and we have a second and let's discuss. Council member Chow, you had your light.
Yeah, I hope to get some of the questions the public raised answered. I think the main issue many people raised was the market is soft, 20% vacancy, so why don't we consider renting a building as interim City Hall? Why are we buying?
As I mentioned, this is a soft market to buy, but certainly if council's direction is not to initiate the negotiation and looking into lease, that's another option.
So in case we rent, how, what's the period that we need to rent an interim City Hall? Is it easy to find, say, a short-term lease for 20,000 square foot?
Unfortunately, I don't have that answer tonight.
Yeah. I think another important question is whether this building is seismic retrofit. I'm assuming you don't know. Right now, we probably will know once we enter some negotiation.
That is correct.
And we would be sure that we know that before we make any purchase, right?
Certainly.
Yeah. Okay. And then also, we don't know right now how much we might need to spend to renovate it to the point where we can use it as an interim. We don't know that at this point. But we will know.
I think Chris is going to stop me once I throw out a number. We're only asking for authority to negotiate tonight. We're not at the closed session price and terms.
But we will have those information when we are making decisions.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I mean, just a background on process. So I mean, we're here tonight, you know, giving the city manager authority to negotiate. There will be a discussion in closed session if that authority is granted and that will focus, you know, focus exclusively on price and terms. If there is authorization granted in that closed session and, you know, the city manager successfully negotiates an agreement within that authorization, that would come back to council in an open session for council to vote on. So there would be multiple opportunities both for council and the public to weigh in before this process is complete.
So is it true that the building has been on the market for four years?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Right now, okay. So when it comes back, it will be an item where we would be making the purchase on the property. But shouldn't the discussion on what to do with this property, whether it's interim, what, shouldn't all that discussion happen in open session on appropriate agenda item? When are we going to have that?
I think there were two asks. One tonight is to allow me to negotiate. Second ask is for council to purchase.
Yeah, both of these has nothing to do with the thing that most people are concerned about, the City Hall. When is it moving? How this building would be used in relationship with the current City Hall? So when are we going to have that?
That's council's discretion.
But my question is, when are we going to have that discussion? So the public can?
Council can certainly add a study session, additional public hearing and whatnot to have that discussion. Certainly council's discretion.
So we can have that before we make the final purchase.
You can certainly do that. I do want to caution and I look back in history, when Torrey Avenue Annex was purchased, I don't believe there was any open session for that discussion.
Yeah, I think so.
Council member Moore? Five minutes, please.
Okay, thank you. I think I would have preferred that we had a discussion about what we want to do with the City Hall situation and the sheriff's office as well, as opposed to how this meeting came about. And I really feel for the members of the public. I was alarmed that we didn't have a staff report, that it showed up under supplemental materials the way it did. I am concerned about how many council members had pre-discussions about this purchase and what those, the nature of those discussions were. I did protest holding this meeting tomorrow night on Juneteenth. I do think it is disrespectful of the city to do so. So we are looking at needing a place for the emergency operations center. It does need to be a risk category four essential structure and this structure was built, the one we're looking at, was built in 1979. It's an office building. It has not served as an essential structure. I would be very surprised because the seismic design standards were different back in 1979 than they are now. I'm surprised there was no public outreach for something as important as where the City Hall would be relocated to, and I think that that's bothersome. I agree with the public, there is no plan. If there is a plan, we haven't been told what it is, but I feel as though that there's been some discussions about, about a plan that we just don't know about. I think the question about why don't we rent is a really good one. Ultimately, my concern is after being on the subcommittee and looking at just doing the seismic retrofit of the current City Hall, that was two years ago and the cost continued to climb since, as we wait, construction costs go up. I think personally, they should have gone ahead and if you're really concerned about your safety over the past two years, that contract should have been signed and that building should have already been, already been retrofitted. We are not real estate forecasters. However, a recent Wharton Business School podcast talked about office obsolescence shock and they were predicting 10 to 20 years. I think it's pretty hasty for us to jump in and buy a property which has been on the market apparently for a number of years. Also, if you go look at LoopNet or other services, you'll find there are other buildings in the city that are also for sale. Why are we settling on this particular one? And I'm concerned about how people feel that they have been treated in this process. Did you know this was coming? Did you feel like you were given outreach? I sure don't think so. I appreciate the question about any potential contamination. I did pull up GeoTracker today and did the 1,000-foot line. There are a number of GeoTracker entries within 1,000 feet. So I think that's important to look into with a Phase 1 environmental site assessment. And I'm also concerned that we aren't really solving the problem of the emergency operations center with this particular building, that we're still going to, this will just be the start. You're going to spend money here, you're going to have to spend money again to figure out the EOC. Are we going to need to spend money yet again with regards to relocating the sheriffs? I had requested that we create a real estate acquisition policy. Still hasn't happened. I've been asking this for a couple of years. Instead, tonight, when we need public buy-in to spend, we're really jumping, jumping ahead and looking at buying property after we just went to the public and said, you know, we don't have the money for 4th of July fireworks, but somehow we have the money to go real estate shopping. And that worries me. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Fuhrer? Five minutes, please.
So I was hoping that the city manager could maybe go over some of the past direction on this topic because I'm getting the sense that there are a lot of folks who feel like this is coming out of thin air and that's not my impression of what our past direction has been. So I'd appreciate maybe you going over some of the history here first and I'll reserve my remaining time if I have other questions.
Thank you Vice Mayor. Kirsten, if you can do me a favor, pull up slide three of my slide deck. The slide, that slide particularly outlines the direction that has been provided by council. Thank you Kirsten. So the first item, first time, hmm, okay. So the first time council gave direction was back in November and that direction was to renovate the existing City Hall. Subsequently, in February of '23, that direction was rescinded to suspend all work. And I want to emphasize on all work to renovate the City Hall and then to explore other options for a brand-new City Hall. And that was last February. And then fast forward to October of last year, council gave direction to staff to continue to explore, not necessarily a brand-new City Hall, but options and conceptual development with financing strategies, which staff will come back with how to finance this interim solution and bring back examples of public-private partnership. You may ask, what are those examples? We've explored opportunities. Again, I don't want to belabor the point that we're not asking council to make the purchase, but we have done certain amount of work in the background exploring these examples of public-private partnership and stumbled upon this great opportunity for a soft-market purchase, hence the reason for the ask tonight. And I appreciate the ask. So it may seem like this is coming out of thin air. I don't, and I don't say this lightly, other than the budget, there are other operational detail that happens in City Hall on a day-to-day plan. And this is just a matter of time presenting it to council and asking for the right direction. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Fuhrer, did you?
Yeah, thank you. I think that largely answers the question. I realize that there's been a lot that's gone on in the course of a relatively small number of months, so it's really easy to forget what prior direction might have been. But I appreciate that the work hasn't stopped. I think that fundamentally, the question here tonight is, you know, we might have a great opportunity, it might be a terrible opportunity. We don't really know. We can't get to the next stage unless we grant this authority and then have certain other discussions in closed session that are only appropriate to occur there. So I understand people's trepidation, but at the same time, this is a matter of good housekeeping. So in order for us to move on to the next step, today's action is necessary. So I understand the concerns, but it feels to me like this is appropriate and we'll see what kind of deal we can make happen through the course of closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Wei?
Thank you Mayor Mohan. Actually, I want to bring the timeline back four more years to 2018 because I've said the seismic issue has been decades. So it didn't come out on 26, just come out on 2022. It came out 2016, 2018, 2020, 2022. And on 2018, then council, their And on 2018, then council, their solution was the Velco specific plan, where a brand-new City Hall, or $50 million or $30 million, I forgot the exact money, would be built. When that plan was repealed from the council, from 2018, the election to 2022, November, when that decision was made, that council, including, you know, I was elected 2020, so is Councilmember Moore, we sat on this City Hall assessment issues for four years. And about ten days before a new council were going to sitting, we voted on a renovation plan, which is seven million plus 28-something million, plus the Tory. So, yeah, we, we, the council has always been thinking about this. The council has always been informed that the City Hall is not safe for our staff. And it's been at, at least a decade. And that's not that the previous council didn't think about solutions, we just never had a good solution. So, this is the time to really move on. But it's like Vice Mayor Frun said, we might not move on because we're just exploring things. So, if you're going to go back to history, go back to 2016, 2018, 2020, 2022, the council has always had this in mind, our City Hall is not safe for our staff and for residents who go in there to do business. So, what do we do now? I think city manager got, you know, a little bit innovative and bring this to us. And it doesn't mean we're going to buy it, it doesn't mean we're going to do it or we're not going to rent. We have options. And I'm glad that people brought the renting options, maybe we're looking to it. So, this is, this doesn't come as a, what I, I think people feel that they being surprised by this. This is the, yes, I, I, I was surprised too, that this is the first time. I look at this, oh, this is the first time that our staff is bringing this to us for consideration. So, it is just a consideration. It is not that we're going to buy it. And as Councilmember Chow also said, this is maybe a good market. If we're looking at rent it for five years or buy it and make money out of it, we're going to, we don't know. We're going to explore the options. So, I hope the residents and the council realize that we're not authorizing anything. It's going to be all come back and it's going to be transparent. And this is the beginning, this is the very first meeting that everybody is hearing about. But our staff is really working on it. And we are going to just look at this, it's not like we're going to really purchase it. We, we're going to decide whether it's a good turn or not, what is better for our residents. And as for the speculation, we're going to build a housing on our City Hall, that's the first time I heard about it too. So, nobody's talking about building housing on the City Hall. And it's all going to be very transparent, decided what we're going to do. And I, I feel that this is just a first step. I'm listening and I'm learning, and we're all listening and learning together. So, I hope that we all feel that when something innovative comes out or an idea that's not ours, we're open to that. We're open to listening to options and we're open to pros and cons. And we can debate and we can really work through things together. I'm pretty sure we're going to work through this together. We're not going to make decisions without public input, without everybody knows about it. So, is that a good assessment, city manager?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do, I think I have one more minute. Can I finish it?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, I understand there are some concerns, are we going to bring the sheriffs in? The sheriff is never being in the picture. Again, and I, our EOC, I'm pretty sure we're not going to do anything if we don't have something for the EOC.
So, the sheriff joining was not part of the ask. I can certainly clarify that and state that is not, I have not had that conversation with the sheriff's office. EOC is certainly another option. And again, given that this is an interim solution, I wouldn't recommend against making investment to turn the EOC into the interim solution at this point.
So, everything would come as a package? You're going to present everything together to us?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. I, I do wanted to make a comment before I go to you, Councilmember Chow. This, we've just come out of a tough year in terms of budget, in terms of negotiation, the housing element. So, this seems like an opportune time to actually move forward with doing something that we've been putting off, as others have pointed out for several years. This is a good time because the market is soft. Maybe when the negotiations happen, we'll realize it's not so soft. So, but, but again, we are only talking about the very first step. No one is buying anything, no one is leasing anything, no plans are being made to move any operations here or there. And there are no public-private partnership deals that are even being considered. This, the interim solution in, in my mind, gives us plenty of time to think about what to do with the, the present City Hall. And we wouldn't have to rush into making a decision. We've all heard so many different suggestions and recommendations for how the city needs different amenities. And this would be a good opportunity to deliberate on those amenities. It doesn't put pressure on us to conclude these discussions or deliberations in a hasty manner because we would have a interim building, interim City Hall, where we could safely house our employees. And parallel to that process, we would have discussions on what to do with the, with the current City Hall. So, so I am, I approve going to first base on this, which is basically just giving city manager the authority to take the first step forward. And I would rather do that and pull back later if we need to than not, than saying no at this, even before we start with anything. So, thank you. And Councilmember Chow, it's your turn now.
How much time? One minute. So, I don't think any prior council direction include purchasing a new building. However, I would like to explore this option since this is soft market. Maybe, we are not spending money, we are purchasing an asset which might increase in value. And if that's a worthwhile investment, maybe in a few years, who, after we don't need it as an interim, we can sell the building. Or it could be even turned into a community center, Quinlan Second to the side of Cupertino, and maybe nonprofit center, if we have money to keep it with Cupertino. So, we are purchasing asset. So, I'm willing to explore this option. Thank the city manager for bringing this option forward.
Okay. So, thank you, council members. Let's, we have a motion to accept the staff report. We have a second and let's vote by lights, please.
The motion carries with more voting no.
Okay. Should we take a break?
That'll be nice, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break, please. All right, we are back from the short break. We go to item number 11, which is the sale of city-owned property at 10301 Byrne Avenue. Is there a staff report?
No, no staff report, Mayor. And, and I think, I received Councilmember Chow's question. I believe the membership public is stating that the description for the item is inaccurate. So, this is the ask for council to release the Byrne property. We're, you know, Deputy City Manager Tina Kapoor and I are here more than happy to answer any other questions. But we, this property has gone through the surplus land exercise, it's gone to closed session with council. So, we're here to answer any other questions that council may have.
Okay, Councilmember Chow, I'd like to start with you since you pulled this item.
Yeah, a handful of people have mentioned this item that they would like to know. It's very hard in Cupertino's market to get only one offer. And whether there is any price comparison for similar property of similar size within one-mile radius, for example, that usually people will get the data before they decide is that a reasonable price to sell. So, if that could be clarified. Thank you.
Okay. Does staff have a response?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Chow, Tina Kapoor, Deputy City Manager. We don't have the data for the one-mile radius available. We, we did work with a broker, a commercial broker. And, you know, as you heard with the previous item, it is a soft market for buyers. However, the offer we did receive is about $110,000 over listing price.
So, how was our listing price determined? Maybe our listing price was below market? So, how can we show that our listing price is a reasonable market price?
So, the listing price was based on the market rate. So, the building was purchased for about $2.4 million and the listing price was $2.988.
But, I mean, if someone wants to sell the house, they would get an assessor to assess the, the property, the market value, right? And then also you want to, if you want to get a good enough market rate, you want to compare with nearby property of similar condition. So, do we have any of those data or we don't have any of those data? So, we just trust the Realtor on his or her words?
We, we can look into the process of whether there was an appraisal done or not. But like I mentioned, we did work with the commercial broker who are experts in their fields, right? So, they understand what the current market rate for a certain property would be.
I, I would add that we don't just trust their gut feeling. There has been a robust discussion with the former Assistant City Manager on this matter.
So, some data was made available to the city?
There was a discussion and there was data. We had comparables for the area. It's unfortunate that we only received one offer, but I believe the fair market value was, was reasonably priced.
Okay, so, can I get that information later? I know I didn't submit a question Monday morning because I wasn't planning on questioning this. I was planning on trusting, but there were other community members who raised questions. So, I thought then I need to follow, follow this up to get some information about how the market rate was determined. If we have data to show that, that would be great.
We can certainly follow up. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So, this property received only one offer in how many days?
I believe it was several weeks.
The property was listed for, the property was listed on May, let me just double-check one second.
Because I did notice it-
On May 23rd.
May 23rd, okay. And I did notice it got pulled off of Zillow with sale pending already. I want to verify that a member of the public said that there, the actual for-sale sign was not installed, that they, they put the frame up, but they didn't actually get to putting the for-sale sign up. Is that, is that true?
We don't know, but we can, they're certainly looking into it. I, I mean, we could certainly have a conversation with the Realtor. But I know that to my knowledge that they have, he has conducted two open house on two separate weekends.
Thank you.
I see no other questions. Oh, Councilmember Wei?
So, if I'm familiar with the real estate process, a real estate agent always do a market analysis for any sellers. I would presume they did one for our city. And then put it on the market. And as to why they don't have a sign, I, I doubt it. I think they should have a sign, maybe one blew out or something, but I don't know. And open houses and wait until offers and then present it to the sellers, the best offer and advise them. I really want to say, I want to ask the question of our city staff. Is that a process that goes with real estate sales with the city?
That's correct.
Okay.
I can also confirm the for-sale sign went up on May 20th, as reported by the broker.
So, my question I want to say is all this doubt about whether the process were properly processed in, as a professional with our city staff, do you believe that the process is fairly and professionally processed?
Absolutely. We followed all procedures and the due process was followed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moore? Oh, sorry, yeah, your light went off.
Pardon, I was just trying to figure out when the property went under contract.
Which contract?
For the purchase. When, when did the-
When do we-
Because it's been sale, sale pending, listed as sale pending. So, the buyer is presumably signed something already.
So, I, I can, so, based on the MLS rules, once you have an offer, the broker is required to place that on hold. There's no agreement that's signed. There is an agreement that's attached with the staff report, which is merely to, to lock in the offer so staff can bring this to council for your consideration and direction.
Okay, so the question is, when did that happen, that it was put on hold?
Let me check. I will have to double-check and get back, get the date to you. It would be sometime after May 29th when the offer is, would you?
Okay, thank you. And then just for the record, if the, the city attorney would share the information regarding if there were ten or more units constructed on that property, that while our deed restriction has 15% for sale and if they were for rent, that is it correct that our city inclusionary ordinance for for-sale units, that we have a 20% requirement? That that would govern over this deed restriction? Or do they, would they only need to have 15% for sale?
No, so the city inclusionary ordinance would still, still apply. There would be a separate recorded restriction that would require, you know, at least 15% affordable. So, for example, if the city ordinance were ever changed to reduce the affordability before that level, then the 15% would apply. But you have to, you, the, the, any applicant for a project of that size, you know, just pretty unlikely at that location, but would, would, would have to comply with both.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chow? I think you have two minutes left.
Okay. So, the housing market is soft, but I read that Cupertino housing market is still competitive. Most homes receive average of four offers and they are sold fast in around 11 days. And so, I wonder, are we in a hurry to sell? If not, shouldn't we wait for more offers? Would that then get us more revenue income?
So, because the offer that we received was considerably above asking price, we thought the best approach right now is to bring that to, to council for you to provide further direction.
When there are multiple offers, usually they are all, I suppose they are all above asking price.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I would hesitate to, to compare this to sort of an average property in the jurisdiction just because the condition of the structure is, is quite, you know, you know, you're barely habitable. And, and so, you know, I would be surprised that, that structure had any, any value to the buyer. So, it's definitely a different market than somebody that, that would be looking at a relatively move-in-ready home in Cupertino. It's somebody that's taking on a big project. So, so I, I just, I'm not sure how comparable that is.
But I think we are responsible to do our due diligence to make sure that when the city purchases a property, yes, we do make some moderate earning, but it's really not, we should still try to make sure that we get the most revenue we could if we are selling it at the market price. Thank you.
I had a quick question. What was the listing price and what did the offer come in for?
The listing price is $2.988 million and the offer we received is $3.11 million.
Okay, so, it's about $150,000. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wei?
So, I have a question. We listed $2.998 and we sold it for $3.988. We listed two point nine nine eight and we sold it for three point one one zero. I'm looking at the price right now. It's in the, in the, so it really is a, usually in real estate, if you list a price, somebody offers more than that, you actually need to sort of sell it because the real estate agent earned their commission. That's just my impression. And I want to say, say if we can get thirty thousand dollars more. Is it worth our time to wait and have staff work on this? I, I really believe that to question the process may be correct, but as I said, I do believe the process is, is due diligence and the, the city staff have done their process. So to question, you know, whether the process is correct or not, I, I would think that we have, I would trust our staff, I follow the, the protocols. And to sell it for three point one zero for this property, to tell the truth, I'm amazed myself that it is sold as much as it is. So I'm very comfortable with the selling price.
Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you. I just want to ask this question again. So it went on the market for sale on what date was that? I've jotted down May twenty-third.
May twentieth is when the for sale sign went down.
Okay, so the, when, do you know when the listing happened?
The marketing listing was finalized on the twenty-second of May.
May twenty-second, okay. And then it was signed May twenty-ninth, the agreement in the packet, the residential purchase agreement was signed on May twenty-ninth. Okay, so it went on the market officially on the twenty-second, one week later it's off with one offer. All right, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, public comments on item number eleven?
Yes, Mayor, we have two requests to speak from Community Hall and I see two hands raised virtually requesting to speak.
Okay. Three minutes each, please.
Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Claudio Bono. Welcome Peggy.
Good evening, I have a slide to show. Could you stop my time? Yeah, thank you, thank you. I'm not questioning the process of the sale. I'm concerned with the details. The agenda item, number three says authorize, well first, it says that the sale is with Zhao Han, one person, and yet the actual contract is with two people. I would expect to see both names listed, I don't know. And this action, number three says authorize the city manager to execute sales agreements. But when you look at the agreement, she's already signed the addendum before she had authorization to do so. Now we're talking, this is just one property. There are other properties you authorized. There were contracts earlier this year that were signed before council gave authorization. This is just another example. And I hope, please, stop. Thank you.
Thank you Peggy. Next we have Lisa Warren, followed by Claudio Bono. Welcome Lisa.
Hi, so Peggy just pointed out some concerns I had about the documentation. So as Councilmember Moore saw, the listing is showing pending on MLS and that happened on the twenty, the thirty-first, I believe. I have it here, I'm just not finding it right now. So anyway, the, so it was on, on MLS from the twenty-third of May until the thirty-first of May. It probably had the offer come in on the thirtieth and status was changed on the February first, but anyway, that's the thereabouts. But it is showing as pending. And that to me is, is a little concerning because it's really not pending. The offer has, the residential purchase agreement has not been ratified. And in fact, not, and maybe this is normal, and I'm not going to talk about price, but just to clarify, there are numerous properties selling in Cupertino for two and a half to three million dollars on lots that are a fraction of the size of this lot and demoed. So the price, like some comments from the city attorney seemed just incorrect. So I just want to point that out. And I'm not squabbling over price. I'm just, if you can see this, do I have to do it upside down or something weird?
Yes, that's correct.
So again, this person was another, is another buyer and they're not on this, this document from the city for this item. The expiration date was three days after the offer, which was made on May twenty-ninth. So in reality, this expired without being signed within that three days. Unless there's an addendum to extend the offer date, these people can get out of it because the offer has not been signed. I confirmed that with city clerk today. However, as Peggy showed, there has been a signature on an addendum, addendum one, on June twelfth. It was written reportedly, because of the name on the bottom, by the buyer's agent on June eleventh and signed on June twelfth by the city manager. However, it's an addendum to a contract and that contract has not been ratified. So you really can't addend, you, you can't do an addendum on a contract that isn't ratified. So that's, that's another, you know, it's a bookkeeping problem. And I wouldn't want the city attorney, I mean, excuse me, the city manager to be signing the contract before permission. But it's not a real-
Next we have Claudio Bono. Welcome Claudio.
Good evening, Claudio Bono. I honestly wasn't going to speak at all. I thought it was a no-brainer, but I, I'm going to duck, call the duck a duck. I'm kind of tired of, of this nonsense. It's been going on over ten years. So here's the new Claudio Bono. Councilmember Chow, we're now questioning the realtor? Really? The listing and the comparables? Anyone can do that. Same thing as Expedia. You can compare and look at all the prices elsewhere. Just put an address, just put the residence and you'll get the pricing. We should be thankful, we're getting more than for a fixer-upper. This is not comparable to anything else. That house is inhabitable. So comparables are easy to do, so, but we are, I see here, and that's what makes me upset, is that we're micromanaging the staff again. I can sense that there is no trust issue with the staff and that really annoys me. So, and Councilmember Moore, someone told you a resident said that the, the sign didn't went on? Really? I heard the resident that says that it also brings luck to fish above one of the bridges near Cupertino. Should we do that or should we hear it too? I found that really off and so annoying. And I'm sensing here, once again, no trust, are we heading to another lawsuit? So guys, if you wanted to micromanage, I would really wonder if you guys maybe should be better off being investigators because honestly, all I hear is negativity, nothing constructive. No one says, "Good job, over a hundred thousand dollars and more on the value of the property." That's why we should celebrate it today. Like I said, everything sometimes is no-brainer, but you guys are slowing down the process. It's annoying. Thank you.
Thank you Claudio. And now we will move to, we have one individual requesting to speak virtually, that is Dinesha Tchamansky. And Dinesha, you will need to unmute yourself. Okay, so actually, Dinesha has lowered her hand. So Mayor, no additional requests to speak for this item from the public.
Okay, all right, so we're done with the public comments for item number eleven. We should go with the motion since we've discussed this. Councilmember Wei?
I move the recommended action.
Okay, do we have a second? I will second it. Did you want to make a comment, Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, and again, I hope that questions from the public can be answered. I think there was question about, is it okay to not list both names on the agenda? And also question about how come the contract is already signed before the council approved? Is that appropriate process? Could you clarify?
We can certainly follow up with the members of public after the hearing today.
I guess this is kind of a legal question. Is it okay to not list both names on the agenda?
So the matter is properly agendized. The agenda item is sale of city-owned property at one oh three oh one Burn Avenue. So that provides, that provides notice. The recommended action is not a legal requirement in any way. You know, with respect to the contract, there is no, there is no binding agreement on the city until city council approves this, this sale.
So even though the city manager has signed, that's not binding?
No, that's not binding on the city in any way.
But there are cases when the city manager will sign a contract and knowing that it will be rectified later.
This is not a case of ratification. This is a case where there is no binding, there, there, there is no binding agreement until city council approves, approves this agenda item.
Okay, and are we in a hurry to sell this property?
I, I'll defer to the city manager on that question.
I believe we received instruction from council to put it on the market and we received a, a fair price and a really good offer and that's why we're bringing it back. Certainly it's council's discretion to decide tonight if you want to move forward.
So we could decide that we want to see if there could be better offer?
Certainly.
Right. But then there is no time limit that we want to really sell it by July first, for example?
There's no time pressure.
Okay, that's good to know. And I, I suppose I wouldn't trust my own research on especially real estate price with Google search. So I would still like the information from the realtor about how they decide the listing price. And I think just for due diligence, we need to have data in order to trust and verify. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore? If we could wrap this discussion up.
Sure. So we have a fiduciary duty to ensure that we get an excellent value when we're selling our city property. This is a fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-six square foot lot that is overlooking a golf course. So it is a really, really nice location, nice property. And the concern is, you know, did we, did we really keep this property on the market long enough to get an adequate number of offers? Because as we said, we've only had one and it was listed on May twenty-second and went into contract on the, on the twenty-ninth. So that is where I'm coming from on this, making sure that the city's money is looked after well. And like I said, when we're selling our property, that we're getting a really good value. Thank you.
Councilmember Chow, your light is still on?
I need to make a substitute motion, or maybe I should wait for everyone comment.
Okay, we're, we're done with the comments. We have a motion and we have a second. Vice Mayor Freund?
Yeah, no, I'll just mention that a shout-out of appreciation to Matt Morley because I peppered him with any number of questions about this property and different things that we might be able to do with it. It, it poses a number of unusual challenges because of the grade. So the, the pure size of the property is rather misleading. There is only so much of it that is actually usable space. And certainly the building, and the building was built in nineteen forty-one. If you take a look at any of the pictures of it or you went to the open house, it's not somewhere I would want to live. So I think those are all things to take into consideration. I, I do appreciate the, the willingness, at least as reported by former assistant city manager Morley, to engage with the real estate agent on what might be possible there. And it's unfortunate that there, that there probably isn't a whole lot more that, that could have been done with it.
I will certainly pass the gratitude to Matt when I see him tomorrow, but I just want to mention that both the item before this and this item, we don't take council's instruction lightly. We have done due diligence on this item and the item before. We have had extensive conversation with both real, real, brokers. However, it is certain, certainly up to councils and councils discretion to see if this is a market to sell or this is a market to buy. But just to understand that we don't take any of council's instruction lightly. There has been a very robust effort and dedication to every ask that is coming to us.
Okay, Councilmember Wei?
How much time do I have? I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
I will give you two minutes.
Okay, thank you. So every time we sell a property or buy a property, we ask ourselves, did we get the best price when we buy a property? Did we get the best price when we sell the property? So all this doubt about fair and due process, I think it's unfair to our staff. You think our staff wants to just waste city money and just sell it at a discount because they want to do that? I, I do believe we have a process. Our staff's done the process. You can put it back on the market, you might get an offer two point nine million dollars. Then what are you going to say? Oh, we could, we shouldn't have done that. You might get three point two million dollars, you get a little bit more. It, it really is have our staff follow the proper process. If it has done it, we have a proper process, we should trust our staff and trust this price is a fair, fairly good price. Actually, to, to really, Zillow, Zillow will tell you how much it is, like one of our residents said. You really can do a market analysis yourself. Okay, so I want to say again, I, I feel that we're criticizing our staff in every step of the way. Did you do it? Did you do it just because you want to get rid of it? Did you do it because you, you're not getting the best price of it? It always, there's always doubt. Do we get the best price of it? Okay, and I understand you want the best price, we all do. But to me, to offer at two point nine million and get three point three million in a week or ten days, it is a fairly good process. And if it's really hot property, you'll get ten offers in one day. Okay, so I actually want to say again, we are in public not trusting our staff, that doing the due process. And I'm not really for it. And I do believe that this is a fair process, it's being done in a very professional way. And we are putting doubts into the process, then what do you want? We can list it ten times. We can get more or less. I want to stop right here. Trust our staff, that they've done their due diligence and trust the professional, they've done their due diligence.
Thank you. And Councilmember Chow, last comment, please, one minute.
Okay, actually, I want to take the opportunity to comment that one of the offers by a nonprofit was to put a memory care unit on the site with the city donating the property to the Bay Area Housing Corporation and they will get state funding to renovate the site to memory care unit. I actually was in favor of that offer, but unfortunately, there was, the staff didn't recommend it and there doesn't seem to be support for that. So I'm sad that didn't happen. And now that it's put on the market, I just want to be sure that we have data, data that shows me I can trust and verify. But there is no data today that I can verify. And it's one offer in, for a property that overlook golf course, just, I don't feel comfortable when I am entrusted by Cupertino residents to, to, in, to access, yeah, I don't think, I feel comfortable to accept the offer. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Let's vote by lights, please, to accept the staff report.
The motion carries with Chow and Moore voting no.
All right, we're moving on to public hearings. Item number thirteen. Item number 13, Proposed Municipal Code Amendments to Chapter 19.48 Fences, Chapter 19.12 Administration, and Chapter 19.08 Definitions and Related Sequoia Exemptions. So our recommended action is to, this is the first reading of the ordinance. Please go ahead with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. As CDD is prepping up and getting the presentation up, I want to take a moment again to thank council for participating in the prep session last week to walk through the scope. We have a short presentation. This is a zoning code cleanup that CDD has committed itself to do. You'll be seeing more of this in the coming months. CDD is going to be the second finance team that will be coming regularly to council to do a lot of zoning code cleanup. Let me take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mohan and councilmembers. Emmy Sugiyama, planning staff, here today to discuss the proposed updates to the fence ordinance. So by way of background, the city will occasionally review its policies and propose updates to certain standards that are either outdated or unclear. And with the fence ordinance, which was last updated in 2011, we're proposing modifications that would potentially streamline city review processes as well as updates to standards for consistency with both state law and internal policies. And then we're also proposing some minor corrections for clarity. In the residential zones, we're proposing an increase in the allowed fence height from six feet to seven feet, and that's consistent with the California Building Code update, as well as standards to allow for minor ornamental entry features, such as arbers and trellises, so long as they're attached to front yard fences. Here's the proposed Appendix A, which outlines the fence locations. The yellow highlighted areas represent areas where a three-foot fence would be allowed, and the green areas are showing where up to seven-foot fence would be allowed, or an eight-foot fence if you had neighbor approval and approval of a building permit. In the residential hillside or RHS zones, we're proposing a reduction of the area of non-open fencing. So currently, we have an allowance for lots up to 30,000 square feet in size to have solid board fencing along the perimeter for the entire site. We're proposing to lower that to a 10,000 square foot maximum for the entirety of the lot to be boarded up by solid board fencing, and then the remainder to be open fencing. And so here are some examples of the solid board and then the open fencing. And these updates were proposed for consistency with our general plan policies as they relate to open space and hillside. We've also updated our design standards for fences. We've identified allowed and prohibited materials. Some of those allowed materials are engineered plastic, brick, wood, wrought iron. And some of the prohibited materials would be barbed wire, chicken wire, cloth, and plywood. We've also updated some of our design review standards to clarify the applicability of those standards outside of the residential areas. And we've added in standards for the maintenance of fences, including one that fences must be maintained in good condition. In this ordinance, we also have standards for roadway and driveway gates. Our current standards would require a fence exception for nearly any driveway gate that's going to be proposed. So the proposed standards would now allow for driveway gates in most zones through just a building permit and subject to specific standards. Some of those standards include for residential properties that the gate be set back at least 20 feet or behind a building wall line, whichever is greater. And then for other developments, that those gates only be allowed when they're separating private uses. For clarity and also consistency in application of standards, we've proposed the modification of several definitions, including those to accessory structure, fence, fence height, residential district, sidewalk, site triangle. And then we've also identified a definition for hedge. And at their May 28th meeting, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended that your council adopt this ordinance. Following that meeting, staff made minor edits to clarify the standards for hedges that were discussed by Planning Commission. And then today, we're requesting further modification to those standards for additional clarity. So we're requesting to remove hedge from the fence definition and also clarify hedge allowances to read hedges exceeding the height requirements for fences as outlined in Section 1948-030A through C are allowed when within interior side and rear yards and within front or street-side yards if perpendicular to the front and street-side property lines and outside of the required corner triangle or sidewalk site triangles. With these updates, we would also be removing the reference to hedges from Appendix A. And so with that, we recommend that you conduct your first reading to adopt the ordinance to amend Chapter 1948, 1912, 1908, with the revision shown on the previous slide to pages 7, 14, and 16. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Okay, I'm asking councilmembers to ask questions of staff to get some clarification on the staff report. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Emmy, for the report. Also, thank you for the pre-meeting that we got to have and get all of our questions answered, except I just came up with one that I didn't think of, and I can't remember if I saw this on your diagram. But with regards to hedges in the public right-of-way, because some people are planting that area and they can get pretty tall, I was wondering if there's any restriction within the public right-of-way for a height there? Because it could potentially block some site distance when you're backing up.
Yeah, those are currently in place through a separate chapter that's going to be 1048. And so those requirements will remain in place. Public Works would be the department enforcing those.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, Councilmember Wei?
So I think I asked this question at the staff briefing. So all this, a lot of the process, we're just streamlining the fence ordinance so that the owner doesn't have to apply a building permit and then ask for, to be asked to do more. So we're streamlining fence permits so that he's due the permits instead of having to go through another process?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and also, this is a complaint base. If somebody's hedge is way too tall, it's blocking the views, usually it's the neighbors complaining. Somebody complained, they will send code enforcement to go out and work with the owner.
Correct, we have a reactive code enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
I had one question. Why is this coming before council now? Is there any urgency? Is there any significance to the timing of?
I'll take that question. I think, similar to my response to the city hall, as CDD is wrapping up on the housing element, the big elephant in the room, they're focusing more on what should have been done. I think Emmy alluded to, not only this is a streamlining effort, but the building code that actually allows a higher fence took place many, many years ago. So we're trying to realign our zoning code with the building effort. As I explained also earlier, will we bring a lot more of these zoning code update to council for consideration? There's no time sensitivity, per se, but we would like to keep it going and bring our zoning code up to date.
Okay, so it's one part of a long process to streamline and get everything updated. Thank you. Councilmember Chow, you had your light on first. Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, I had a similar question because it's good to get this updated. And usually, we see this on the agenda when there is a state bill that requires us to update some portion of it, and therefore, we update. I don't see a state bill mentioned here, so I'm curious what triggered this? Because this is not on the, also, it's not on the work program. But it's good that we get this updated. I'm not objecting to that and streamline. Just curious about the process.
Sorry about that. Through the mayor, if I may, Ben Foo, Georgia Community Development, thank you for that question. So what we've been trying to do is taking a look at these code sections. This section was set up in 1970s, and we did have one minor update in 2011. So a lot of these sections have been there for almost 50 years. And what it does is it's creating an extra process, an extra layer that's not necessary.
No, but my question is, I thought this year, we are very shorthanded with housing element. So how come the staff has time? And how much time was spent on this? Did we need to hire a consultant for this update?
Good question. We do not have to hire a consultant for this update. So these kind of efforts are part of our operations. So from your planning division, we do more than just say the housing element. We still got to process permits, we still got to, you know, take care of the public counter. So these kind of efforts is standard operations. Look at our code, look at different ways to continue to improve and provide better service to the public.
Over the years, you kind of feel like, oh, this is part of the code that's not clear. And then that's in a back banner, and when there is time, then you try to clean it up.
We do have a list of things that we want to continue to accomplish and update. So this is one where we felt like we had the capacity to do this year.
So can we have a list that's on the back banner that's upcoming? So that we know what, this ideally should be in the work program, so we know it's coming. And then how much staff time? So could I have some list for a potential update in the next year?
So first of all, I don't know if I consider it as a work program item. So this is part of operations, because I would be saying if we have the process permit, we got to put that on a work program. This is a standard process that every community volunteer department and also planning division would do for different cities. Now, in terms of a list, we can look into and provide an update. I know that councilmembers have one-on-ones with the city manager, so we can have those conversations, we can look at how we can provide that update for you. Like you mentioned before, depending on our resources and time, I like to not overcommit, but we do have a few items that we are thinking in the process of working on.
Okay, I would be happy to learn that list. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Wei?
So, don't go away yet. I think you can answer some questions. So I hear this is operation. Because when our department is doing operations, you do notice things that maybe not aligned with certain, you know, old rules and needs to be goals. So these operations are daily process of our staff that do. Is that a correct assumption?
That's correct. And for this particular item, we've been hearing a lot of observation and feedback from the public, you know, that it costs a certain amount of money to provide for this kind of processes that's not necessary. So we hear the public, and that's why it's on our list to continue to improve.
So not every item is a work item?
Yeah, I think a work program item is something I would consider something extra. That requires extra staffing, extra costs, something that's coming from the council. A lot of these things are operations that we have, it's our job to do this, so.
To make the operation smoother and then to conform with current laws and to update old laws? And so that, so I want to go back to the list. I understand Councilmember Chow's desire to know everything, but just to make a list is going to take our staff a lot of time to collect all those lists. Is that a correct assessment?
I'll have to take a look at how much detail provided in that list. So it is going to be a little bit of time. And I prefer just have staff like Emmy that focus on the actual work and product and bring something complete to you to reevaluate.
So if I compare this as budget, it's a working process. It's a discovery journey every time that our staff is doing something. They'll say, hey, this doesn't sound right, and it happened 10 times in a month. Then the staff say, hey, we need to take a look at this. It doesn't have to be a work plan. It's something that's operational, that you're going to perfect, you know, make it more up to date. Is that how I see this correctly?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And for some items that we discussed during the work program items that requires much more exhaustive staffing and resources, that's when we come to you and have that placed on a work program. Something like this, update the fence code, that's something that we can easily do, and we'll try to accomplish that.
Okay, thank you. I think that basically answered my questions.
If I can add to, so Councilmember Chow asked earlier, why now? So Emmy alluded to a outdated building code, that is the reason why. And we just never had the resource to get to it. That's not a good excuse for never get to it. So, and also, as we're going through the housing element process, as CDD looking at the rezoning effort for the entire zoning code, I think this also afforded us an opportunity to relook at our codes. Ben was very generous in talking about the code was updated lastly in 2011. In the lineup of planning profession, this should have been a more constant four to five, three to four years of a review every city. This does impact not only the city staff time, but also the community members, what they're going through, the efforts that they have to make in terms of submittal. So it is an ongoing commitment that we're making to the community and also council to make Cupertino a better place. Do we have a list? Yes, we do. Is that list permanent? No, because we don't know what's going to come tomorrow. We can certainly give council a heads up what's coming up. I could just say that CDD is also working on the heart of a city specific plan. They're working on the treeless, we're working on parking. We're also working on many aspects of the zoning update pertaining to the housing element. So we can certainly have a tentative list, but it's not a permanent list.
Vice Mayor Frue?
Just wanted to highlight why this might be of value to the average resident. So right now, if you wanted to build a seven-foot fence, what process would you have to go through?
Currently, you would need to obtain a waiver from your neighbor to allow for that seven-foot fence that you would then need to give to us, and we would hold on to.
Got it, okay. And what kind of added time would you have to endure as a resident trying to make that application?
I would assume you would need to locate it, fill it out, and then turn it in. I would assume, you know, a couple hours of your time at least.
Okay, but you're still getting permission from somebody else?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Sometimes it's hard to track down the other person who's there. And it's fairly standard right now that seven-foot fences are what people are expecting to build.
Right, it's consistent across other communities to have seven-foot fences.
Got it, okay. So it seems like this is just something that cleans up process for people, makes it easier. All right. Just out of curiosity, on Slide 6, you have a reduction from 30,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet for a full boarded enclosure. And the stated reason for that is to make it more consistent with general plan policies involving open space. But was there anything in particular motivated specifically 10,000 square feet?
10,000 square feet, I believe, came from the fact that that's kind of the higher range of our single-family residential zoning, since our one zoning district. And then that kind of was the cutoff where we were determining it.
Got it, okay. So it wasn't arbitrary, there was a fairly reasonable reason underpinning it? All right, thank you.
I had a quick question, following up on what Vice Mayor Frue said. For the resident, isn't there also a cost savings? When you don't have to go to the seven-foot?
Right, so for the seven-foot, it may not be necessarily a cost saving. We don't charge an application fee for that. But for things like the driveway gates or anything over that seven feet, right, we have a fence exception process that's rather expensive and also time-consuming for the resident.
Okay, so this process eliminates all those constraints?
It reduces it, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Chow? Two minutes, please.
Okay, great. So I, this came up after the prep session. I was wondering, people often have lattices on top of their fence. Does the height include lattice or not?
It will include lattice.
It will include lattice, so it can be exceeding seven feet? Okay. And then, I think you mentioned in the prep session, the height is from, could you explain that again? The height is counted from the reasonable, I forgot the term.
Yeah, so that's going to be from the finished grade on the higher side. And we did update our definition to kind of clarify that a little bit. Basically, we're saying that that's an approved grade, so someone can't add in extra dirt just to say that they have a smaller fence or a shorter height there.
But I think sometimes people add some base to strengthen the fence, and then the actual fence will be on top of some maybe concrete base. So this would all be counted, right? So the height comes from the ground up?
Right, it'll be from the grade.
Including the lattice.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
So I'm just going to repeat that part back. So if you build a retaining wall and you put a fence on top of it, you're going to count the entire height, the retaining wall plus the fence. So you can't get tricky with that.
Correct.
Okay, great. And then there is a strategy you can do. So if you, if... So if you, if you were to have a five foot fence, um, and you, perhaps your neighbor wants to keep it at five feet. What strategies do you have in order to get to the six or seven feet? Um, in that kind of a scenario, what, what can a homeowner do there?
So if I'm understanding correctly, the shared property line fence is the one in question at five feet. Okay. Um, I, I would say you could build a higher fence on any portion of your property inside of that fence. If that's something that would be open to you. I really can't think of many creative ideas other than that right now, but that's what I would think.
Okay, um, I just wanted to add onto that, like, cause this question comes up a lot. Is that fences aren't required and they're typically shared along a property line. So that our ordinance really just deals with assuming you want a fence, this is what you can do. Uh, so I think what's being described here is where there may be a difference between what neighbors want on the common property line. So seven feet is allowable, it's allowable even without a building permit because there's no structural issues. But in the instance of if you wanted to independently put one up at seven feet and your neighbor did not want to do that. That starts to become an issue between neighbors. But if yours was step back inches to where it was entirely on your property line, you can then have that seven foot fence. But then there's still a cost issue and all that, which is something we don't regulate.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Councilmember Wei?
Oh, that is my quick question. Fences are actually not required.
Correct.
So we take it so granted, think that there has to be a fence, actually not. And so if I want a fence, my neighbor doesn't want it, I build it on my part of the property and I pay for it. If a neighbor refuses to do it.
Correct. If you could have no fence at all anywhere and that would be acceptable as well. I think it's just common practice in most of suburban California that you have a fence.
I think a lot of people don't realize that fences are not required. So I do have some people argue about fence and the guy just, I don't wanna build a fence. And so the neighbor just build a fence themselves within their own property.
Correct. If your neighbor doesn't wanna participate, probably the best option would be to just set it back so it's entirely on your property.
Okay, thank you. I think the public is very curious and, and, um, and we're curious too. I actually learned that not long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Chow, did you want to ask a question?
I still have time, I can ask later.
Yeah, it'll come back to us. Let's go with public comments on, um, on, on this item. Are there any public comments?
Mayor, I currently see no hands raised virtually, nor do I see any speaker cards submitted to speak in community hall.
Great, okay, so let's bring it back to the council then. And, uh, is there a motion to, um, accept the, the first reading of the ordinance as laid out in the staff report?
I'm happy to approve the, the staff recommendation with all the revisions that were added to clarify.
Thank you, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, is there any, uh, discussion from, uh, the, from council? Councilmember Chow, you had your light on.
Yeah, I still had a question, thank you. I think, just want to clarify, if the neighbor doesn't want a higher fence, but let's say I want a higher fence. But then can I put a 12 foot fence that's like one feet away from my property line? Is that allowed? That would be similar to like someone put an A D U very close to the.
I believe that will be subject to a fence exception application. And then it will be up to C D D to make findings to approve that fence exception.
They have to apply to if they want a higher fence, even if it's on their own property.
Correct. Just like if you're building an addition to your house, it would need a permit.
Oh, okay. So you're saying it's allowed to be higher, but still needs a permit?
Correct.
Okay. Great.
Okay. Okay, so we are done with comments, so let, we have a motion. Excuse me?
Oh, no public comments, yeah.
Yeah, we have a motion, we have a second. And let's vote by lights, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the action calendar. Item number 14, future agenda items requested by city council members. This is, this is the T B D list. And the recommended action is for council to review the list and modify the list. Madam City Manager, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't have a presentation, we do have a staff report available for council's review. I appreciate, uh, Mayor trying to put this under consent. Just wanted to provide some context. So this is a new process that, uh, council has, um, established since last year. Every quarter, we bring the T B D list for council for, um, instruction if we should go ahead and, um, um, get more investigation or research done before we come back. So so far for this quarter, we have received a number of nine items. And for the most part, um, the items have either resolved on its own. For instance, um, a study session was asked to be conducted for the housing element. We've done that, um, to look at a budget headcount for city staff. We've done that during budget session. And also we've, uh, followed up with a number of informational memos on different topics. There are a certain ask of staff to either remove that or postpone it until a later date. That's outlined in the staff report in a table format. More than happy to take any questions from council if you have any, um, if we can provide any clarification. But we do not have a presentation at this point.
Okay. Any questions for, uh, the city manager from council? Councilmember Moore?
Okay, um, thank you. So looking at item two, uh, with regards to the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation, uh, tax exempt status. So what happened there is that the last, um, IRS tax return was submitted, uh, for fiscal year 2014. And then, um, it, what it looks like is three years passed without filing any returns. And the city was put on the auto revocation list and lost its tax exempt status. The Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation is used, um, as a lease, for a lease, leaseback arrangement to issue debt in the forms of certificates of participation. So when the city reissued debt in, um, 2020, the city had actually, uh, at that time, they were no longer listed as, um, being tax exempt. And they issued, um, tax exempt certificates of participation. The Public Facility Corporation, the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Can I, I just, I just wanted to remind you that this item is not agendized for discussion. This is, um, uh, essentially a future agenda setting.
Right, and so it's actually saying that, um, uh, this wouldn't be touched for our annual meeting of the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation until November 18th of this year. The organization, yeah, we're all directors of this, uh, corporation. We're supposed to meet annually and it has not met since 2020. So, uh, I'm concerned for, you know, why the long wait? It seems like we are years behind holding, holding our meetings. And I also wanna know what's going on with the tax exempt status. I was given, um, an email, uh, a while ago. I have no idea if it's, uh, progressing, if it's being, it's successful, um, in getting that tax exempt status back. So it's, I don't wanna wait until November to, to find out the answer. So that's why I'm bringing that up. And, uh, that's, that is with regards to item two. Item five refers to the treasurer and attorney, but, um, it's not really being addressed, uh, as, as I would want it. The recommendation is that it's removed, um, and, uh, and it talks about the, the organizational chart. So when you look at the municipal code for the city manager, it actually says that the services and facilities of the city treasurer and the city attorney shall be made available to the city manager.
Councilmember Moore? I mean, again, I think, I think, I mean, you, I think, I, I, excuse, yeah, excuse me. I, I would just suggest that you, you try to direct your conversation at why this should stay on the future agenda items list rather than the merits of the item.
Well, the item isn't reflecting what I was requesting, which is if you, if you look at municipal code 2.28.040C, uh, the, the treasurer and attorney are supposed to be available to the city manager to the same, same extent and same manner that the services are available to the city council. That is the item that, that, uh, needs to be included here and why it should remain, um, on, on the T B D list and, and put on, on, put on the agenda. Cause that's, that's pretty significant. There's also a number of, of resolutions the city council passed, um, over the years, saying that they, uh, appoint the city treasurer, that the council appoints them, it even shows up in the A C F R annually. So that is, is also part of why I think five needs to be, uh, written up differently and, and retained. With regards to the financial policy and best practices, the question there, this is with regards to item seven, is wanting to have the inclusion of, um, as you recall, we had 48 million sitting in a non-interest bearing checking account for the over, over a year while interest rates were 5%. We lost over $2 million in interest. 45 million did get moved, um, but since then, the account bounced back up to 20 million. And I was told that it was, uh, going to be discussed and I don't know what happened to that. But that's, we need to have a policy that addresses that in this, um, item seven does not include that. So I would want that to add that in and, uh, come up with a policy there. For item nine, the study session on banning artificial turf, um, uh, having an informational item is not the same as, as seeing if the public would like to, uh, have a ban on that. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from council? Councilmember Chow? Five minutes, please.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think it might be a good idea in the future for the two T B D list to include the original request emails from the council members. Because it seems the four or five words does not really capture the nature of the request. Because I don't know what council member Moore is requesting or, or not. And other, the public or the, uh, other council members might not know from this very short description. So that would be better, um, for the information on the record. And, um, for me, the, um, I think, um, item number two, I understand we had an information item, uh, so far for the status. But then there will be new changes in December. So I was expecting we could, would have additional information item when the issue rates that were actually addressed. I believe we were trying to reinstate the 501(c) process. If that has passed, that would be nice to know. And for number four, I think this is an item that has been requested by the community members. And from the city, the, the staffing chart that's in the city's budget every year, we know that the, the headcount has increased dramatically in, during the pandemic in 2021, 2022. And now we reduced it, but slightly. So it would be a good idea, like we are doing a policy review regularly, maybe it's a good idea. We do a review of our staffing, especially we have cut services. So I think that's a conversation the council and the community should have together. As for the invest, number seven, the investment policy. My understanding from the study session or, or the council meeting we had earlier on the investment policy in May was that the staff will be revising the policy to address the deficiency that we have, we are seeing now with the $50 million city in checking. And then I was expecting the investment policy would come to the council agenda for discussion. Because if we are making any kind of change in our policy, it does require council approval. And, uh, it normally was approved in May, that's a bit too late. So it feels like, I think the staff was proposing to do another policy review end of this year. I thought that was really, really good, uh, idea. So I, I was happy and was expecting an item would be coming to the council agenda end of this year. So that starting from next year, we have a new investment policy with, so we can better invest our assets. Yeah, that's my main comment so far.
I wanted, uh, clarification, didn't the investment for, policy come before council fairly recently?
Yes, it has.
But there wasn't a substantive change that addressed the concerns that we had.
And we made that commitment.
I appreciate that staff says that you are working on, uh, updating that.
And I believe we made a commitment to come back in the fall.
Yeah, but that's, that's what I thought. But the staff, um, the column three in this T B D list says that there will be an information item. And the staff will review, it doesn't say it will come to the council in the fall.
Depending on the recommended change on the investment policy.
But what, depending on the change, it should come to the council so we can discuss the recommended change, right? So that's why.
Just to be, be clear, uh, Mayor, the, the, uh, council member Chow has the floor.
Yes. Yes, go ahead, council member Chow.
Oh, so, um, yes, so thank you for confirming that this item welcome to the council in the fall. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Okay, oh, councilmember Wei?
Thank you, Mayor. So, so when I see item number two, um, I think the staff has committed to agenda this already. It doesn't mean that they're not doing anything. And, um, as to how comfortable council member Moore wants to wait until November, I will leave that, uh, for, uh, for staff's discretion. And for, uh, excuse me, um, the, the, the headcount. I wouldn't say we dramatically increased the headcounts. And I do think the budget says how many staff we have and, you know, how, why we're having the staff. So I, I think this, this headcount thing is a, is a statistics thing. I, I, I just don't think it's really a council agenda item to, to discuss about it. And I, I do think every year when we do the budget, we know the headcounts. And as for, um, number, number five, it, it. Yeah, I, I think we have, um, talked about this and it's, the budget has been passed and the organization chart is done. I, I don't see why we're moving along and, and wanna make this an agenda is item. And, um, if we need more information, we can always ask for information items. So I, I, you know, I, I know, um, there are a lot of things we want to talk about. But it really is, like I said, a lot of times is, is a work in progress. So, um, I'm hoping that when the staff says they're gonna do something, provide information items. If we're not happy with the information, we can, we can, you know, ask more questions and put that on the, on the agenda again. So I am comfortable with a lot of staff response for the investment policies. If it comes back and then, um, depending on this big changes, the council needs to approve, is it just language changes? And, and I, I do believe that the staff is working on it. So whether it comes back or not, it really depends on what recommended change that the staff's recommending in the investment policy. So far, the staff has committed to almost every item that's being, um, talked about, that's being proposed. And I think we can really look at what staff's recommendations are and go from there. So I'm comfortable with a lot of the staff responses on the proposed agenda items.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So going back to item five, um, that is, uh, codified in the Cupertino municipal code.
It should be three minutes, councilmember Moore.
2.28.040, uh, that the service. Two point twenty-eight point zero four zero, uh that the services and facilities of the city treasurer and the city attorney shall be made available to the city manager to the same extent and in the same manner as that the services are available to the city council. Um, and that, it doesn't seem to actually be, be followed um according to that code. So I'd like to have this come back. It's also not included in item five. Um, and as I mentioned previously, we have um various resolutions that say that the city council appoints the treasurer and there's, there's some clarification needs to happen with that. And I would like to know from the, the city attorney, what are legal requirements for the Cupertino Public Facility Corporation to hold an annual um meeting? And if we could have a, a memo to the council or if, if that's a ready answer is available, um, that, that would be fine, too.
Yeah, I thi- I think, I, I do believe that information has already been provided to council, but I will check on that. But, but again, I mean, I think the comments, the, the comment should be limited to that fact that you would like that to come back as a, as an action item on a council agenda.
Um, correct. I, I would, I would want that to happen and, and same with uh the, the issues with item, item five as well.
Mayor, I don't believe we've gone to a public comment on this item yet.
No. Okay. I think you're right. Are there any public comments, uh, madam clerk?
Yes, mayor, I have one request to speak from Jennifer Griffin in community hall and I see one hand raised virtually, San R.
Okay.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Um, good evening, city council. I think this is good that you all are reviewing um items that might be um wishing to have more information about, the TBD list. Um, I'm going to bring up the one about the housing element um, oh, study session, which I did attend. I'll tell you, I'm so exhausted by this housing element. I think that a lot of people think that the housing element is over. It isn't. Um, it's not for me. And I still have a lot of questions about what's happening. Um, I was actually speaking to a woman this morning for an hour who lives in another city, who has similar things happening in her city, which is going through certification. And I told her that we had a whole bunch of missing middle that had been dumped into our housing element and the city was not, nobody in the city understood why it was there because HCD did not require it. Um, and she'd had, so HCD is trying to get rid of her um story polls and they're not gonna do it. So the other thing is, I'm sitting here, okay, I hear that Valley Church backed out of being housing element site and I understand why. My city of Los Altos has my city church, family church, one parking lot is sitting in the Los Altos housing element and I don't know if it's been upzoned. The pastor didn't want it, the congregation didn't want it. I have questions. Okay, so I think Valley Church was smart to back out because I understand that that bill the Buffy Wicks brought in like God in my backyard, that they say that nonprofits can come in and force the churches, that they have to put housing in their parking lots. I don't know. I, I believe that Los Altos could have some, some group come in and force my church to put high density housing in the parking lot. I mean, it's a Long Foothill Expressway and there's two other churches. So I, it's not over for me and we had, look, God, hell happened tonight with everybody trying to change all the zoning. And, and the rest of us are sitting here going, okay, what, what's real and what's not real? I, I don't believe any of it anymore. It, it, it's getting to the point where I dream about it. It's not over. And, and I think that, that the state's gonna try to take my church away. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And next we have Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I'm going by my pictures. Number two, um, Public Facilities Corporation tax exempt status. If I remember right, the city has hired somebody to help them fix it. And I think there should be periodic updates to find out what the status is. Whether it's uh a informational memo that comes out every three or four months until, and, and the November eighteenth meeting is a long time if you've been neglecting these meetings for, what, five years? And it says that the tax exempt status, it doesn't mention that it's going to be agendized at this meeting to be discussed. And I would ask that you do that because over and over again, we hear it's not an agendized item, you can't discuss it. So it should be an item at this meeting and hopefully the meeting would be earlier than mid-November, right before Thanksgiving. Number five, organizational chart, city treasurer, city attorney positions. When I read this, it seems like two different items. The org chart that was modified and now is corrected, it says citizens of Cupertino in the budget, uh organizational chart. But when I went on the city website, it said city of Cupertino and then council. It should be, it should match the budget and both of them should say citizens of Cupertino, not city of Cupertino. So I'm asking that that be corrected. And that um maybe five should be modified to say review treasurer and attorney positions in the municipal code and their interaction. Number six, nexus study for traffic impact. I like that the staff says that there are a lot of other nexus studies that need to be done, but traffic is really important and these buildings are coming. So if this could prioritize traffic, that would be nice as maybe the first nexus study. Study session for banning artificial turf, given the environmental concerns. Please don't put this in a memo. There's no interaction, there's no questions, there's no bringing up stuff. I'm seeing more and more neighbors pave over their front and backyards completely. And if they don't pave it, they cover it with plastic, green plastic. So please bring this out into the open and discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And we have one hand raised virtually from San R. Welcome, San. San, I see that your audio is not working, but the audio level's bouncing up and down. So you need to switch your audio setting. Still not hearing you. Uh, mayor, what would you like to do? The audio is, um, appears that San R is having technical issues.
Okay, is he aware of it?
It, yes. It looks like, oh, here. We heard you for a split second.
Okay, so, so let me try and if I don't, then we can do it on the time. I'd like to ask for some of the benign items to be removed. Uh, certainly the org chart and the housing element study update have now passed their time of consequence, given those items have progressed along. I would like to request that the traffic impact study be retained as well as the headcount study of staff. I think we have gone through a prolonged budget cycle where residents have had to face a number of cuts. We have not had a study cycle on what has been the growth in staffing from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen to where we are now. And I think it's critical that residents have insight and visibility, particularly in administration. When I look at Open GAO, administration has grown by leaps and bounds. The city manager's office alone seems to be a three X growth from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Maybe that is reallocation from where they used to be to where they are now. So maybe there's some movement in people that reflects that change. But I think it's important for transparency that residents understand what is going on with the headcount. I would request that the headcount and the traffic impact study be retained. I would also like to request future agenda items for an RV parking ordinance and a homeless encampment ordinance, that you are able to take action to evict both of these out of the city. It's not fair to residents that live in those areas and to businesses that operate in those areas to be subject to those conditions when we pay such high property taxes to live in the city. And finally, I do want to point out that when we offer these future agenda items, it is coming from residents. In, in most of these cases, councilmembers are not bringing these up in a silo, they're hearing from residents. And so I request all councilmembers on the dais to please respect that these agenda items are on behalf of residents and to respect the voice and will of the residents. So when we have certain councilmembers that second guess the intent of the agenda item, particularly when it's still relevant, you are really questioning the residents. And I would also point out that many of those residents probably voted for you as well. So please, let's show some respect for the will and voice of the voters on whose behalf those councilmembers are asking for future agenda items. So I hope we will show some tolerance and respect for that. Thank you.
Okay, so that, that ends the uh public comments.
Yes, mayor.
Okay, let's uh bring it back. I was wondering if, if we could just go down the line and if you have, if you needed to, if you wanted to modify the list, uh, you would just state that and uh city manager, if you could just list it and then we, we don't have to do, do a motion on every single item. Would that work?
That would certainly work. I think I noted um several items from councilmember Chow and councilmember Moore. So if I could walk council through, I didn't hear anything needs to be modified on item one. Um, I think item two, um, councilmember Moore and councilmember Chow asked um additional information. So of course, uh, uh, I need a motion on number two. I hear councilmember Chow asking additional questions on item number four. And then additional questions from councilmember Moore on item five. And both councilmember Chow and councilmember Moore asked about number seven. And then councilmember Moore asked about number nine. So that leaves um number one, three, six, and eight untouched.
Okay. Councilmember Moore, you had a question?
Uh, no, I was actually gonna make a motion that we accept the recommended action for um items one, three, six, and eight if that uh motion um is acceptable to the city attorney. Am I, is, is that adequate?
Yeah, you su- you could certainly make that motion to, that would, would um dispose of items one, three, six, and eight if, if, if adopted by council.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay. So let's vote by lights on, on this particular one. Leave one, three, six, eight, or get rid of one, three, six, eight.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So let's look at number two. City manager, who did you want to say anything about item number two?
Um, item number two, I believe the informational memo was provided to council on multiple accounts and we have committed to bring um an annual uh meeting per the bylaw in November. However, if council feels that um additional study session or conversation or discussion needs to happen before then, we're not happy to um make that accommodation.
Okay, so I'll punt this to you, councilmember Moore.
Okay, um, thank you. So the, the annual meetings, we're supposed to be holding um annually. Uh, the last one was held um in twenty twenty. So we are uh years behind. I think it might be helpful um if the councilmembers are given, um, since we are directors of this corporation, if we're given copies of the bylaws so that we know exactly what we're supposed to be doing and the, the articles of incorporation, um, to make sure that we are um conducting our fiduciary duty. And, and we should have a little bit of an education session on, when we do hold our, our annual meeting, hopefully before the end of the fiscal year, um, that, that we understand what the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation actually does because I think that's, it's kind of a, it's a little complicated to follow along with the certificates of participation that, that were issued and um the city's actually been doing this since the, the eighties, issuing this. And it's a way that you can raise funds um without going to the voters for a two-thirds vote.
Okay, so should we uh do a study session and before the eleven, November eighteenth agenda?
And just clarification, the bylaws and also the background were provided in the first memo, but we can certainly circulate it again.
Okay. Uh, do we need a study session before the, before it's agendized? Any uh? Okay, councilmember Wei, did you want to talk?
Okay, I belong to a lot of board, okay? The bylaws and the uh article of incorporation are for us to read. If we have questions, we ask the city attorney. And so I, I, I don't think a study session is necessary. If we have the information, we read the bylaws, we have questions, we ask the city attorney and we understand it. It, it is not a complicated thing. It is something that's legal, that's being done. And so I, if, if we have time, uh, maybe a study session, but I really think we can do this study ourselves. That, that's, that's for myself. I can do that myself and ask city attorney questions. And so I.
Okay, so we.
Wouldn't think of study sessions.
So we leave it on the agenda for eleven eighteen?
So I, I mean, I'm gonna try to suggest a way to, to sort of streamline this process is maybe you could take a straw poll for these remaining items and, and we could walk through them with just some sort of reasonably expeditious way. Um, I, I, I think, I mean, I think that, that the councilmember Moore has, has um asked that this item be, the city manager's recommendation be modified to include a, a study session prior to this item coming back for its, you know, annual meeting in November. If I'm, please correct me if I'm misconstruing what you're, um, what you're suggesting.
Um, yes, uh, but, but through the mayor, I actually have a question. Is it, since we're not actually wearing our director's hats right now, is it appropriate and, and through what mechanism are we denying the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation to hold their meeting while we're wearing our councilmember hats? It seemed, you understand? Um, it seems like we need to agendize that meeting and then, and if that body does not want to hold a meeting prior to November, they, they would be making that decision. We're, we're making a decision for a separate.
Well, I mean, I think I recall that the, 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 um, the bylaws specified that the annual meeting is in November. So.
So we didn't hold one last year or the year before?
That, that's correct, yeah.
So we, we haven't been holding our annual meetings. We are.
Yeah, but we will this year.
I, so the ci- the city coun- the, the, we could certainly hold a study session on the, the, the duties of that board. I would have to think about whether that should be a city council study session or a study session of the council sitting as that board.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, okay, let's, let's do the straw vote then. And.
Item two.
For, this is for item two. Do we, uh, I think we've all agreed it, it'll be agendized on eleven eighteen twenty-four. Do we need a study session or not? Let's just make this go faster, councilmember Chow, so.
So do I state my reasons?
No, ye- yes or no?
I don't, oh, I don't think we need a study session, but I would like when it's agendized in November to include the, the bylaws, articles incorporation so that we have the background and then the status of the uh reinstatement of the four oh one C status. So I assume all of that could be made available on the agenda, right?
Yes, the agenda should include on.
In November.
We, we can certainly circulate the bylaws earlier. Like I said, it was part of the first memo, but we're more than happy to include any of the background information.
There could be another information memo before the November meeting.
If that's what council desires.
That would be sufficient for me. I don't think we need another study session.
Okay. Straw vote. What's that? You. Okay. Are we doing straw votes or are we doing? Yes, yes. Councilmember Moore?
So I, I would definitely want to have the study. So I would definitely want to have the study session. We haven't filed our tax returns since filing 2014. We're derelict, we are, we have a fiduciary duty, and we're, this body is deciding to not even hold an annual meeting and to fully understand why we're unable to turn in our tax documents to the IRS.
Okay. Council member Fuhr?
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're literally deciding right now to have the meeting, so I don't really find this particularly convincing. I'll also mention just, you know, if anybody wants it, the secretary of state's website maintains initial filings and statements of information for all business corporations in the state. I'm looking at the articles of incorporation of the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation right now. I was able to look it up in a couple of minutes. So this information's out there, it's really not hard to get. I think that we are making a mountain out of a molehill here. I look forward to us having the meeting in November.
Okay, so the motion, as I understand it, is to have a meeting in November with all the background material attached to the agenda item.
Likely an information memo before the meeting or at the meeting, raise the status of the reinstatement.
At the meeting is fine, yes.
Yeah, at the meeting is fine. I think staff is making effort to reinstate the 401s, 501(c) status.
So we are in agreement to have the meeting on 11/18 and all supporting material be included for discussion at that meeting?
Yeah, I would just say the record will reflect that. I don't believe council member Moore agrees with that approach. She can correct me if I'm wrong, but I just wanted to make sure that that's reflected.
Okay, all right. So do we need to vote by lights? On item number two? Okay, so we're done.
For the purposes of this exercise, I think this is adequate.
Okay?
Excuse me. For the purposes of this exercise, I think this is adequate.
All right, so let's move on then. Item number four, the headcount issue. Staff recommends removing this item. I am in favor of the staff recommendation. We talked about headcount during budget, before budget, and the appropriate time to talk about headcount is once a year at budget deliberations. Council member Chow? Yes?
Can I, so at the budget discussion, we did not look at the historical data and look at how many staffing we have for each department, how much has changed over the years. And I think it's worthwhile information for a public agency like us to do this periodically to review our staffing. And the chart that's available in our budget actually shows there is a dramatic increase in, during the year when our population is going down. And then the staffing level hasn't gone back to the 2018, 19 level. And then, like the public mentioned, some departments, like the city manager's department has three times the headcount. There might be reasons, I know that we moved department around, but public.
So, yeah, so I do think, I think, again, we're, yeah, I, yeah, I could, yeah, we are veering into discussing the merits. I mean, I think that, so council member Chow has a proposal to keep this, this item on the future agenda items list. So I would recommend taking a straw vote on that proposal.
All right, so we'll start this way. Council member Wade?
No. Headcounts is for work, and I think we have headcount numbers presented as a budget. We don't need that.
Council member Chow, you're a yes. I'm a no. Vice mayor Fuhr?
So I'm also a no, but I would say that it would be useful additional information when we get to budget season so that we can have a clearer discussion at that time.
Okay. Council member Moore?
I'm a yes because I don't like seeing so much information piled on during the budget season. And I also think it, the number of contracted employees that are performing city regular work should probably be included so that we understand what the policy is around that.
Okay. Where are we on this items?
So I believe there were three noes and two yeses registered.
Okay, so, all right, the next one is five, number five?
Item seven is next, yeah. Oh, did we skip five? I skipped five, excuse me.
Five, I think. What is this? I mean, the org chart is going to be changed.
I think the org chart is already changed. I have a question. I think council member Moore's mentioned that this language here does not really reflect. So are you asking for a review of the city treasurer and the city attorney roles and responsibilities from the municipal code? Are you asking for that?
Well, the question isn't with regards to the attorney, it's noticing that municipal code 2.28, 0.040 has both the treasurer and the attorney positions codified as serving the city manager to the same extent, to the same manner that the services are available to the city council, which gives the appearance that the treasurer is basically appointed by the council and serves the council and the manager, just like we hire the city attorney and the city attorney serves the manager and the council. So that's, this, if staff would do this, item one addresses this item as well and suggests it goes on as a city work program, the review of the city treasurer resolution, including appointment function and process for ratifying accounts payable. So I think it is within that heading for one that perhaps this could be included.
Yeah, I think that certainly this general concept is within the scope of one, and I think, I think, at least I think I understand your concerns, and so we could, I think we could certainly address it as part of that potential work program item that's being, that's mentioned in one.
Then through the mayor, then I would drop five and we can move on to the next item.
Okay. All right, the next one is seven, which is review the city's financial policy and best practices.
No.
My understanding is that we are doing this.
Six, number six.
Six, done.
Six was part of the motion.
It's number seven, which is reviewing the city's financial policy and best practices. There is a, there is a staff memo.
I think the city manager clarified that this item will be on the council agenda. I think whether there's the recommended change or not, the council needs to be, to know why there is or is not recommended change. So as long as it's going to come to the council agenda end of the year, I think that would be fine. So maybe this should stay, but clarify, the staff recommendation is now to bring this back to the council, bring the policy to the council.
I'm sorry, I don't think I made that commitment. I said, we're definitely going to be bringing an informational memo based on the ask to council in September. Based on that informational memo, if council wishes to modify the investment policy, that will be a second ask.
Then I wish this remains until we receive that memo so we can decide.
That's fine, I would be okay with leaving it on that. Yeah, council member Moore?
Thank you. So I just, I would like to clarify that the issue that I have is that we don't really have an idle funds policy, and that would be the real crux of that matter. So if that, if it's clear that that's going to come back and we'll have some recommendations around that, I haven't actually seen great ones looking around at other cities' policies, but if we can craft something there to make sure that we, you know, have all of our money working, then that's great.
Right. The only reason I'm not committing to a policy is we're still doing the research with China right now. With the time that we committed to come back in September, I don't know if I will have a policy ready. We'll definitely have the research and our findings ready available for council's input, and it will be best described to council in an informational memo, which is the reason I propose that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that because I think it meets all our requirements.
Yeah, can I ask one additional clarification? So just want to confirm, I think in the last meeting, I assumed that the council chancellor would try to address the issue that other cities have about 2% to 5% of their portfolio in cash, but we regularly have about 20%, 15% to 20% in cash. So I assume they will review the policy, so we could be comparable with other cities so we don't keep too much in cash, so we try to use interest earning.
Right, so I think, so I think that the city manager had heard that input. I think now we're again veering into the merits of the item.
So that will be addressed.
It sounds like there is, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, that there's a consensus that this should stay on the list with the intention that the city manager will bring back an information or memo that reports on the progress of research into this issue and will, and with the potential to bring, you know, additional policies back to council as necessary for council approval. If everybody's okay with that. I think we have consensus.
Nine, number nine, which is a study session on banning artificial turf given the environmental concerns. And staff responses, they'll provide an informational memo random to council.
Right, and I do want to provide a little bit reason why we're committing to info memo, not a study session for two reasons. Number one, we don't have any expertise on staff right now to provide any background on this topic. We will rely on a consultant or extensive external research. Number two, we don't have any artificial turf proposal coming to city for any city park or any private use, other than what one of the members of public alluded to, residential allowance. And I don't know if this is something that has been clarified by council member Moore, but I think originally this came from the nearby adjacent high school use of artificial turf in the sports field. Again, I reached out to staff, we just don't have that expertise right now.
So.
Mayor, I'm going to be really brief. I'm comfortable with information items. This item is fluid, things have changed, and Fremont Union High School District went through this. I believe let's have more information first before we decide to add it to agenda, take actions, or go this way or that way. So I do believe we need more information first.
So. Yes, so why don't we leave it at that? Staff will provide an information item on artificial turf.
Let's keep the item and wait for information memo, and then we can review.
Okay. Council member Moore?
Okay, thank you. I believe I was the person who brought this item up. The Sierra Club held an informational meeting about this in the library expansion a couple months ago, and they have an extensive amount of information about artificial turf, so they would be a really good resource since they've been looking into it. And I am seeing a good bit of it kind of proliferating in the neighborhoods where we hadn't seen it before. Okay, thank you.
All right. Do you need any, oh, sorry, vice mayor Fuhr?
Yeah, no, this was one that I was interested in too at the time, and I generally agree with the approach of getting more information first. I just was curious as to when we expected to get that information memo.
I believe we'll try to get it done before November, so in the fall.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so it looks like we're done with, oh, council member Chow?
I have a question. So in case the city has a policy that bans artificial turf, does that apply to high schools?
We don't have a policy and does not apply to high schools.
In case we have, does that apply to schools within the city vicinity?
I'll leave it up to Chris.
That we would have to look into.
Okay, so that concludes city manager. Who did you need any more information or you're good with?
I am good, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, all right. Okay, so that's item number 14. City man, yes.
Do we need a vote for five at least?
I think, given the nature of this item, I don't think it's necessary to have a vote. I think, I think that there's, you know, the council has gone through the future agenda items list, and this is, you know, set future agenda items, I think, as long as the city manager understands the direction. I don't think we necessarily need a vote.
Hey, sorry for the interruption, mayor.
It's okay. Madam city manager, do you have a report?
I do have a report. We do have a video summarizing the pride flag ceremony from last weekend. We can enjoy that for the next 30 seconds or so. Thank you, video.
I'm honored to stand before you today as we raise the progress pride flag to recognize and celebrate June as the LGBTQ plus pride month.
The fact that we can say celebration and that I, as the first gay member of the Cupertino City Council, have the privilege of being able to do so marks just how far we have come in a very, very short period of time.
Let us consider this flag this month as a symbol of acceptance and belonging each time you look at it for everyone in our LGBTQ plus community.
Let's see what we can do to make sure that we allow our LGBTQ folks, especially our LGBTQ youth, the ability to live authentically and be proud of who they are. Happy Pride!
Okay, that concludes our council meeting.